Okay, we'll call the city council work session on October sixteenth, twenty twenty four, six P M. to order. We'll call please.
Mayor Allison?
Here.
Tom Baylor? We know you're there, Tom.
I'm here.
Okay.
Tom, that's open to stand mute button.
Got it. Kathy Sherman?
Here.
Casey Kinsman is absent. Wendy Rainey?
Here.
Dave Zastro?
Here.
Kristen Carpenter?
Here.
And Ken Jones is absent. That's a quorum of council.
Here, work session topics tonight are ordinance twelve twenty one, title five, re-rate regarding the city sales tax. You want to take this, Sam?
Uh, I think I'm just gonna just jump, unless anybody has any particular place they want to start, I think we just let Holly jump into the worksheets unless somebody has a dying need to start somewhere special. Sounds like you're it, Holly.
All right. Thanks, Sam. Um, so I actually think council went through the bulk of the substance of the ordinance and left really only some very pointed issues that we needed to deal with. So when we look at the worksheets, we can start by talking about each of those worksheets. I think the best approach would be to answer questions and see where, and just have a question and answer sort of approach to each sheet. But finally, we have some optional amendments that were specifically designed to provide council options based on the objectives and goals mentioned by several of the council members. So we can walk through those. So unlike our last work session, I intended this to be more pointed simply because we've covered so much ground in the last session. I still, you know, I could always pull up the PowerPoint and can delve back into specific chapters. I'm not foreclosing that, but I just, that was sort of my original thought is just to really hit those topics that matter. Can I just take a, get a feel if that works for council, that approach to sort of really looking just at the Q and A and the worksheets and then the optional amendments?
Yes.
Yep.
Sounds good.
Great. All right. So I think then, Mayor, I'll defer to you if you want to sort of walk them through each of the worksheets and just ask if there were questions on the worksheets.
And the worksheet by worksheet, you're talking about these summary sheets?
Yes.
Is that what she's talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So, yeah, and so it just does they appear in the packet, or I can do that. I mean whichever way you want to do it, but.
Doesn't matter. We just start, the first one was city sales tax, transportation in the city. We go straight forward again. Questions on that? Okay, the backside of that sheet is construction materials and services.
I had one clarifying question. Under the previous construction material service, how its tax now was talking about the very last sentence, one project cannot exceed four years. And number three in the next paragraph, a refund application period was reduced from four to two years. So that means only a two-year period total.
Where are you?
Sorry, come on.
Yes.
Work session package.
So that's.
Page four. Okay.
And that's six, oh. Am I interrupting?
Go ahead.
No question.
Okay. So really what we see here is we did reduce the application period from four to two years. And while, and we extended the filing deadline to October. So we really wanted to make sure we pointed that out on the worksheet. And in fact, just to really get council's thoughts on that, that change, that's a abbreviated refund application period. The concept being that you want to cover the construction, the original construction without bleeding into some of the, um, the projects that really come after the fact.
So I guess, just to clarify, a project cannot exceed four years is still the case, but, or is it two years a project can't exceed? How would that propose?
It, it's been changed from four to two. So you would be able to, so currently, if you did a refund application, you could file for a refund for four years. Under the proposed ordinance, you would be able to file for a refund for two years.
The wording of the term is.
So, so does that mean now a building permit is only good for two years, or?
A building permit's always only been good for one year. You have to renew the permit each year. But we've had a limit that you can't just keep getting a tax card indefinitely. You've had a four-year period where you need to get the construction done in four years if you want the tax break. If it takes you longer four years, then no more tax break. The new proposal is to reduce that to you can take as long as you need, but you only get the tax break for the first two years of the project unless council decides otherwise that they want to see it extended again.
So they would each year, so currently, each year they have to pay another three hundred fifty dollar.
Correct. And they would under this as well, but they would only be able to do it two years in a row instead of four years in a row.
Yep. Whether or not the actual construction project lasts no longer.
Yeah.
Yeah, the only thing I can see there is possibly, you might need to do your fill work. And then wait for it to settle for a couple of years. Or do the foundation this year. I mean, that's happening right now on at least one project I know of that's, do the foundation this year and then, and their, actually their dirt work was done, started probably two, maybe three years ago. It was very complex. So, it might take longer than that. Something for council to consider, I would think.
But when do they get the building permit?
They get it as early as they want to. I guess, you know, technically, we haven't, there's no, I don't believe in the current code that you're required to renew it every single year. If you're not going to do construction for a year, you don't technically, I guess, have to get a permit that year.
Right, okay.
So you could stretch it out over multiple years if you don't apply for a permit that year. But I mean, I guess it.
But the new code, it would be two consecutive years?
It's not written that way either. So I guess it would still just be two, or building permits.
I don't think we want to leave our code to interpretation by whoever's in charge at the time. I think we need to put in writing clearly begin with wherever that, whatever that decision is.
Well, on that right there, that's a good point. That is a policy decision because the way it is now, so if you're coming into a construction project, you might be, you know, you might say, well, we're just going to be doing our fill at this point, but we're going to hit it hard. We know it's going to, you know, we're going to be really in it in next year. So that is when I'm going to file for my refund application so I can get all of that tax benefit for the next two years. So I'm really targeting when I'm going to be spending and benefiting from that tax, that tax exemption or benefit the most, right? And so that's still providing the benefit, but it gives it parameters. So the intent was to give them some flexibility. And you'll see that in the tax code. We tried to do it clearly, but also allow them to, by them, I mean sellers and or taxpayers who are in a situation, to make decisions about how they structure their business, to take advantage of exemptions that are there, that the city has decided are worthwhile, and to take advantage of the refund application to extend, to the extent it, you know, it benefits them. And so they can tailor it. And there's nothing wrong with that, right? We want them to be able to navigate the code.
So basically, you're allowing, you're allowing a builder, let's say, to purchase two different tax exemptions at a three hundred fifty dollar price. And if they, if they purchased the first one and they do all their site work, they don't go back and get the other one for three years later after it's all settled in, they purchase one more, one more exemption for one more year, and then that's the end of it. Because that would be a total of two exemptions on one project. That's the way I would look at it.
Well said. That's exactly, that's exactly correct.
And is the way it's written in code clear to that? Do you think, Holly?
I believe it is. You know, it's an, it's a two-year application period. But we can look at it again. And so if, to the extent that there is a word or something to the mayor's point where we can frame it, and anything we can make clearer, we should make clear, you know? I mean, tax code is complex as it is. So we can look at that language. I think it's clear. But after the work session, I'll revisit it. And to the extent we need to add a word or do something like that, that's an easy amendment and non-substantive.
I think you could put that in that frequently asked questions section and have that sentence and have it asked and answered. I mean, again, I like that in a lot of other building applications, on their permitting, they have that sort of thing. So it would kind of clarify it.
Just a.
Absolutely.
I was thinking, I heard Tom say, you could get the refund and, in one year, and then skip a year and then get it again in the third year. But it says the refund, the refund application period was reduced from four to two years. And I read that as two consecutive years, but, yeah.
Well, you change this language, I think.
Yeah, I will clarify it to make sure that it's understood that it's not consecutive. Does not have to be consecutive.
Just a little parentheses, does not have to be consecutive.
There's no parentheses in the code though.
And we will also.
As much as I use parentheses.
Anything else on the construction side?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
So I, I agree with, the exemption card option has been removed. I agree with that in the whole refund process. But the construction, the line two, the construction materials and those items becoming permanent parts of the structure, that's where I, the definition for me gets a little blurry. So I sit down and, when I build homes, it's, it's basically my, my inspection sheet. And I think if we kind of went through this on a building project as far as the, what's exempted, your first step is you got site prep, that would be one. You've got utilities, your sewer water, foam, well and septic. And those two things you might want to do, and like we've discussed, maybe you left that set for a year. But that would be, to me, that should all be under the refund structure, you know, for taxes. The next thing, your foundation, your framing, roofing, including siding windows, exterior doors and roofing, that's another phase of it. I think that should be tax exempt. The next one would be your mechanical, your plumbing, your heating, your ventilation, your electrical, insulation, bed for burying, drywall, mud tape and painted. Your next step would be your kitchen bath cabinets, plumbing, trim, sinks, toilets, faucets, et cetera. The next thing would be your flooring doors and interior doors and trim, then your light fixtures and outlets and switches, and then your built-in appliances. To me, all of those things should be listed as, as tax exempt. And then if somebody has to come in and, you know, they got to check the box for that phase. The other thing I would say that, to qualify for this, this has to be done by a licensed contractor to qualify. So those are the things, when it says becoming permanent part of the structure, I think those are all part of a home. And that's what was required for a bank to loan on, and all these things have to be done. So I guess for me, I think if we list those things, those are very clear to anybody building a place. And, and if they use their buddy to do electrical, then they don't get the exemption for the electrical. But if they use a licensed plumber, then those costs get exempt. That's the way I would look at that. Thanks.
So Tom. Just a couple.
I just have a couple of questions for Tom on that subject. So like, are you, when you say check the box, are you thinking that's like, one, two, three, four building permits? Or this box is within the building permit? Or this is on the tax refund side? Unclear where this goes.
Well, this all falls on your building permit, but it's the, on the tax refund side is what I'm looking.
So you're not suggesting?
To me, all of these things become part of the structure.
Okay. So you're just.
And.
So if you're looking at the optional amendments on page eight and nine, it sounds like you're in favor of option two, where it's clarified that the tax exemption is good for all things except for property that's not typically required to obtain a certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, basically, that's, that's where, that's where I'm heading. And that's why I actually listed these things. And I would even recommend to staff that we could put this together as a list of this is what's, this is what you can get a tax rebate from. Somebody comes to get the building permit. And now, you know, you have site prep. If somebody wants a refund, they come in with their receipts, with their contractor, and the amounts. And, you know, and it's, they're not coming with a box of receipts. I want you guys to figure it out. Here are my costs. Here's what it was for. Here's who did it. I want my money back. So it would be very clear for anybody that's stuck in the project.
Yeah. And so that, that goes along again with that option two, the second sentence saying the city will maintain a policy document that lists, I guess we'll change, we can change that wording, but we'll just, you know, we'll maintain a policy document that outlines the, you know, items covered under the exemption, or how would we word that?
That's what, and so whether you're an experienced builder or you're, or the first time ever taking on the project and you're going to be your own contractor, it would be very clear and plain to whoever was doing it that this is exactly what we need to do and these are the things that are covered.
Councilmember Baylor, so for that option number two, I think based on what you have said, the, with, the sentence that says the city will maintain a policy document that lists, and then it says appliances and fixtures, I think we were a little, we're a little narrower than your intent. If you change that to eligible personal property and services, um, or, I'm sorry, just you don't need eligible. So just personal property and services would go after the word lists, that's underlined and bolded, and before the word that. And then it says that you would do not qualify for the exemption. And then it would be, I don't want to speak for, for the administration, but I think it would be really helpful to be able to work with you and run that list by you, given your experience as a contractor, to make sure that it's comprehensive and that we're, we're getting where we need to go. And I do, I prefer having the list as a policy list that is mandated under the code so you're, so council can be assured that the public will have that document. But it allows staff to change it and to, to make sure that everything's included. Inevitably, we are going to end up having something come before council or be submitted with a refund application that we didn't anticipate. And that allows the city to move quickly and the public to stay informed with, you know, what's on the list. So if that works, to have, to keep that sort of as a policy-based document, but it's a mandated policy-based document under the proposed amendment, that may be an amendment you want to make.
I like that. It works.
Great. So I'm going to change that language. And then the, the other question you're really putting before council is a really important policy question. And that's the question of, does the work need to be done by a licensed contractor? And the reason why is it changes the nature of the exemption in theory. And that's okay, you know, and narrowing the exemption in many ways based on your purpose statement for the sales tax as a whole, narrow is better, right? It's not, exemptions are not supposed to be, nor they're supposed to be the exception, and they should tightly, they should very carefully reflect your policy goals. So I'm not saying, I'm not taking a position on it, but I do think council should discuss it separately. Do you want to include a general contractor limitation for eligibility? And if we do that, we need to be careful and make sure that we're tying it to a state license or something that has been found to be sort of a reasonable, reasonable line in the sand under the constitution or under equal protection, which that would be if we required someone to be a licensed contractor, service provider to have a, you know, a business license.
Well, to, for me, it's backdoor way to, to promote local contractors, local people, you know, instead of just somebody showing up from Arizona and doing a bunch of work. They don't pay, they don't have a business license. They don't pay taxes. They don't have employees and we're giving them a tax break. So that's, that's kind of why I feel strongly about it. And then.
Since we can't, since we can't refer local contractors, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna interpret what you just said, Councilmember Baylor. And I think what you're saying is unless a contractor is coming in and getting a business license and following the city's laws for the operation of their business, regardless of how long they've been in Cordova, you want to make sure that they're complying with those laws.
Correct.
Okay.
And you're going to get homes that are built correctly also, because they're, you know, they're, they are licensed and bonded insured.
Just, just play devil's advocate just a little bit here. Those, those unlicensed people aren't, aren't, are doing everything under the table anyway. So they're not going to be collecting sales tax anyway. So why do we need the tax exemption for somebody installing my cabinets that's from Montana? So I.
But you mean more than just having a city business license. You mean having some licensure in the field, right? There are licenses that we can.
Yeah, I mean, are we, are we limiting it to like the specialty, like services, like plumbing, electrical? Like, are you even talking like general contractors? Like, you can't do your own framing. So if you want to buy a wood package yourself from the local lumber store, you don't get the tax exemption unless you use a licensed contractor that's going to do your framing?
Well, let me clarify my stances. You're not gonna, if, if Joe, Joe Dirk shows up from Arizona and frames your house and charges you ten thousand dollars in labor, you don't get to deduct that ten thousand dollars taxes. You shouldn't be paying the taxes. And that license, he's just helping you out. Now, if he's a licensed contractor and he submits you a bill and taxes, yeah, you should get the refund. I guess that's, it's just a way to protect it a little bit.
And so what I'm hearing, really, that would not necessarily attach to personal property the way that, in order to meet the objective that you're trying to meet, we would attach that to the services. So, and I think we can work with the option two amendment to expand the definition, to really say that, you know, services eligible under this exemption must be provided by a licensed contractor. And I think then we'll just have to really pay attention to how we're defining contractor, because it also sounds like we want to make sure we're getting fill work and other types of services included in the exemption. And we don't want to be requiring a type of licensure that wouldn't, wouldn't be applicable or would exclude people unintentionally. So if, if that is where, if, if council agrees with that change, if council wants to make that change, then that's something I can work with Kevin and administration on, if that sounds good. Yes, Kevin?
Yeah, I guess I, I think I understand. I just want to make sure that it's clear. So, again, so we're talking about just a refund related to like labor costs from a contractor. So like, if I wanted to do my own plumbing, I could still get a tax refund on the, the material. And then obviously, I'm not charging myself to do the work. But then if I wanted to have somebody do the plumbing for me, that person would need to be licensed for me to get a refund on their services. So we're, we're not talking about materials, just the service.
That's what I would propose, just given that we have, we, this, we've expanded, under option two, we expand the exemption to include things like appliances, right? And so it would be, many people install their own appliance. You know, the appliance itself doesn't necessarily trigger a licensed contractor component. But if they put something in for installation services and they're seeking reimbursement for that, then it would be appropriate to require that to be done by a licensed contractor.
Yeah, because you could run into a situation where your, your buddy charges you ten thousand dollars in labor at seven percent sales tax, and it's actually a five thousand dollar job, you know? And then your city ends up paying a lot of taxes back. A licensed contractor's not going to do that. They're going to be straightforward. And, I don't know, I just I think you need to protect our licensed contractors too. So I'll leave it at that.
Is that opening itself up to something that's easy to take advantage of though? After what you just said, that scared me. I don't know. I have to think about it.
Yeah, I, I still say that they're, if I build a house and I buy my cabinets from the local lumberyard, so there's one receipt that I've got, and then I hire Joe Schmo on his time off at the cannery to come do my cabinets for me, he's, he might charge me a thousand dollars for that, but he's not reporting that to the city, he's not paying sales tax, and I can get my seven percent discount right away because there's no business license involved. So.
Well, how do we get guard against that? What's the correct way to guard against that?
Everybody's got to have a business license. I mean, we need to, we, we've known that's been a problem for a while. There's a lot of people doing business.
I think that's just one of those things, like you can't have a perfect system. There's always going to be people that are going to do things under the table and, you know.
Right. But Joe Dirk from Arizona, a lot of them are getting business licenses. I mean, they're being sent letters and they're coming in and getting business licenses.
And if they're licensed, and they can be still be a licensed contractor, right? I mean, even if they.
Well, that's the part I don't understand. The licensure of beyond getting a city business license.
I mean, does it, is it a license that you get from the state of Alaska or other states?
I don't know.
Would the state of Alaska plumbing license be applicable, I mean, I'm sorry, would the state of Arizona plumbing license be applicable if you got a, if someone got a city business license in Cordova?
Yeah, or, or maybe it'd be more complicated in California. California construction regulations are much more stringent. So probably.
And I think what I hear, what I, what I thought I was hearing, which I, which I think is legally appropriate, I mean, I think what, we're looking at Alaska business, an Alaska license in that field. So if you're an electrical administrator and you want to electric, you want to administer, you know, electric services in Alaska, you have to have an electrical administrator license in Alaska, if you want to be an electrician or plumber, you know? And so because of those requirements that are grounded in health and safety, I do think it's appropriate if that is a restriction that the city wants to impose on the exemption. But I do also think that to limit that, to limit, to apply that to personal property, I think will get confusing and might be, you know, that will be harder to justify. So it just applies to services performed. So the way I see that working is a refund application comes in, it has a couple receipts from a plumber and electrician that are, that are properly licensed. It is something from a handyman who is not properly licensed or hasn't been licensed. The city is going to check the licenser, licensing for the, the receipt submitted. And if they aren't licensed in whatever service they're providing, then they won't be, you know, they won't be eligible for reimbursement on any taxes paid on those. But the one question is, I mean, the licensures for some of the trades are very clear, right? We know for plumbing, for electrical, but there are also general contracting services that are not as, that, that very, they're not separated, but you have a general contracting license requirement for the state of Alaska. So I guess, I think it's okay if the city wants to do it. If the question is, do we really want to administratively have to separate out? And based on what the mirror is saying, you know, would that maybe, it may be a lot of work for something that we're not going to see very often. Most of the time, if someone's charging the tax and they're applying it and it's on their invoices, then they are going to be properly licensed and conducting business properly. And I think that's what I'm hearing. Is that correct, Mayor? Is that what you're?
Yeah, I, I guess I, I just don't see a whole lot of time needs to be spent on this because until we start cracking down on business licenses, I don't think we're going to see, see much of that. But my last, uh, keg in the iron there is, are any of the, I know that some licenses in Alaska are reciprocal. Are any of the construction ones reciprocal? Like, you know, if, if you're licensed in Montana, that license is good in Alaska.
Do we recognize, does Alaska, do we recognize other states?
Yeah, they do, they do some, some, I know they do some trades and they're looking at doing, I don't know if teaching is there now, but they were looking at doing it. I don't know if teaching is there now, but they were looking at doing it with nursing.
And some of the, I suspect that they allow each.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
Does Alaska recognize other states?
And I just don't want to make the wording, if we're going to make them be licensed in Alaska, just make it so that the license is good in Alaska or, I don't know how you word that, but.
Currently you cannot take a license from another state in the trades and transfer it to Alaska. You have to sit to the test and prove your worth. So.
Okay, yeah, I don't know how in the construction trades how that was because I know that it is that way for some of the other professions.
It's not a big stumbling block. I just threw it out there.
Well, it makes sense to want to protect the contractors who enjoy the right thing and to not reward the folks who work under the table. So.
And quality of building.
I think Holly, I think you're good. We could work on getting those words together.
Okay. And one thing, when council's talking about the justification for this change, one thing I would propose too is I've heard the city talk about concern regarding the integrity of infrastructure and making sure things are built properly. And that is certainly a very proper emphasis and goal. It does get muddy when we start talking about basically protecting local against sort of outsiders, right? Because of our equal protection provisions in the constitutions, desire to ensure we don't discriminate against companies coming from outside of Alaska or outside of Cordova. So just remember that other purpose as we, as we talk about this, you know, that, you know, making sure we have licensed contractors who have obligations, insurance, accountability for the infrastructure they're, they're constructing.
I guess one other comment on option two. I'm really happy to see the certificate of occupancy. It's nice to tie that to something real. So that makes sense to me.
Well, just to clarify, we're not issuing certificates of occupancy.
I understand.
Okay.
I'm saying over time, what is considered to be, give the whole part of the structure.
Yep.
We danced around that quite a bit last meeting.
Okay, so we're all good with the construction one? Okay, the next one I think is the bundled transactions.
And actually before we move on from construction, I want to walk, since we did this, we jumped into the options. And we, it sounds like we've really settled on option two from council member comments. It might be useful just to talk about what's listed as option four. And that is a, so there's actually, there's two additional amendments. I just want to talk to council about them because those would really be add-ons before we move on to bundled transactions. Would that be okay?
Yeah.
Okay, so option four includes, it would include a sentence at the end of the definition that says, "Construction materials and services do not include construction materials and services for the construction of accessory buildings, including but not limited to sheds or greenhouses." And that was to create clarity. If council wants to do that, that we're talking about the, you know, the primary structure. And that also makes it easier because a lot of times sheds or greenhouses are built and it's different. You can go pick one up, you know, buy a kit. You can, you know, so it's, you could have one shipped up from Costco. You know, it's kind of a different, a different process and product. But that is one exception.
Yeah, thank you for, thank you for bringing that up, Holly. Because yeah, we want, we wanted to make sure that we brought that up and did get clarification from what the council wants. Because, um, you know, our thought was also it is protecting the city's tax base. You know, our understanding is the whole reason for wanting to provide these tax breaks for people is to get them to build a home or build a business here in town. And so, you know, we really thought that then that should be limiting the, the tax refund that you're getting to that purpose, not that, okay, I'm going to build a house and then I also want to build a fancy shed, you know? And then the city's losing out on potential tax income from something that's considered an extra. Um, that's just a nicety to have as opposed to really focusing on getting the refunds for building that primary use on the property.
I goes back to option two, honestly, you know, just we're allowing people to get a break on what is enough to be able to move it to your own.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, I, I agree that that's written. And then correct me if I'm wrong, Kevin, I, um, too many jurisdictions. But I think if you're building a shed, is it, is it less than 200 square feet or something? Don't we have a size you can build even without a, a building permit, I believe?
Yeah, our, when we did the building code update, we did limit, um, you can build a shed under 200 square feet without a permit. In my head though, I mean, I think this even goes as far as, you know, a shed could be 200 square feet, but a shed could also be, you know, your quote unquote like workshop that you build, that's 500 or 800 square feet. That's in addition to your house. And this would limit that the tax refunds are only for your primary dwelling, your primary use on the property, not for whatever extra you want to build on the property.
Yeah, I could, I, I could go for that, but I would throw a caveat unless somebody was going to actually start a business in that type of square foot. That, but I don't want to muddy the waters. I like how we got so far.
What if you got a building permit later, 10 years later to build something?
With this, with this language, anything else on the property would be considered accessory. Because when you go in land use, you have your, you have your allowed uses and then you have your accessory uses. And so if it's a residential property, your house is your primary use. And then if you build a shed and that's a, that does turn into a business, that's still considered an accessory because it's accessory to the primary use, which is residential.
Yeah, clean, keep it clean. I, I agree.
So what I'm hearing is we should add this language to the construction materials and services definition. So.
Is everybody good?
Everybody's good with that?
Okay. Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Sam, I'm going to base my understanding by your nod or no nod?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. You're just like, only I'm seeing sort of, you know, I don't see all of you. I see only some of you. So, um, the next one, we're going to, we have one more. And that is a, a, okay. So one of the things we looked at was the policy and purpose. And it looks like one of the purposes was to promote housing, right? And providing housing and encouraging that. And so this amendment proposes the addition of the language that limits it to for construction of a building that contains at least one dwelling unit. So this would limit the exemption to residential construction in a sense. That it has to contain at least one dwelling unit. That wouldn't, that wouldn't limit it if you have a commercial, you know, construction that's going to have both commercial and residential or primarily commercial, but would have a dwelling unit. But this is, this is not one we talked about, but we wanted to bring it in front of you just in case that we were, we made sure where we landed on this definition was, you know, where we'll end up most likely. So that is my question for council. Do you want to limit this exemption to, uh, construction of a building that contains at least one dwelling unit? Or do you want to leave it without that qualifier?
I like the one dwelling unit myself.
Who was that? Was that council member either? I'm sorry.
Sorry, yeah. Because, yeah. Because I think that's a whole, you know, where you encourage things.
Why would we not, why would we not? Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. Why? I mean, it's not a huge amount of money. And if we're, I was just thinking, yeah, if somebody wants to build a, like a, an office space or a studio in the yard, a separate, a separate structure that adds to the property tax base, why would we not support that?
We can support.
We're about to give economic development.
Is the question.
Property tax. We're about to give those things, the big economic development property tax break. So now do we give them sales tax too? Well, we're giving those to residential also, kind of.
Yeah, I think. Go ahead, Tom.
I'm sorry, yeah, if you put it in those terms, I would rather give it the, the sales tax on the building part and let everybody pay their, the property taxes, support the community just like everybody else. If the upfront money cost is, is probably more helpful to somebody to get a house built or a business. And then the taxes are kind of stretched out over many years. So if we're still considering giving tax rebates, I would say no to that. And I would say yes to the, the building, for the, for the tax break on the initial building part of it.
I think too, it's important to understand that, you know, you, it's, you, I mean, it was mentioned that it's not a lot of money, but sales tax on.
A million dollars, yeah, is a lot of money.
Is a lot of money. Where only, you know, the city would only be receiving 350 or seven, you know, max 700 bucks with this particular way of doing business. So it is a lot of money.
It's a lot of money, but on the flip side of that, it's a lot of money to me as a builder that's suddenly adding seven percent to the cost of my, my project. That's not trump change to anybody scraping as much as they can so that they can do this project.
I, I'm okay with leaving it as, limiting it to residential buildings if we are giving a, a time limited property tax break for somebody's developing a business. Because we talked about doing that for commercial buildings.
It was you guys talked about commercial and residential.
Both.
Both.
Right.
Right. And a limited number of years on that is okay if you think about the fact that it'll be around for 100 years or more.
So I would be okay with limiting this to residential.
It certainly does encourage anybody building a business to put a little apartment in.
Yes, it does, which is what we need, right? amend your plans.
And that is an excellent point. I mean, as you, you know, all of the extensions, you really want to be justifying the basis of them. And it does, it creates a direct incentive to create even as, you know, a, a studio apartment, you know, if you're building a, a commercial building. It doesn't limit, and that was one of the things the administration talked about. It really is not limiting it to more than 60% residential or it doesn't create that. It really just puts this bottom, this floor to the extent that makes the difference. The other thing we can do, whichever way council lands, you know, what, we can always make sure that we're flagging this to be reviewed and potentially amended based on what you do with property tax exemption. So we can make sure that we're paying attention if you're balancing the two and sort of your overall tax portfolio. And we can revisit it and then, you know, change it back to, um, to remove that dwelling unit or add that dwelling unit again based on whatever you guys do so that it's balanced.
I mean, based on what I'm hearing right now, it sounds like this is something that you would like to see in the memo for additional debate as a potential amendment at next week's meeting. Is that what I'm hearing?
Are you, were you going to make these amendments before the meeting? Or do you think on the floor? The ones we decide on today?
This one sounds like it would be one that'd be made on the floor since it sounds like there were more debates to be had.
I, I would agree, but what do you think, Holly?
I mean, to the extent that council is in agreement so far, except for this one. So, but on option two, there really does seem to be a lot of cohesive thought on everything we've worked through on Title V, so are on the sales tax. So my proposal would be to bring a substitute ordinance, introduce a substitute ordinance with the changes, um, so long as we don't have any substantive changes that we're expecting to see on the floor. I think that, I'm, I'm trying to think through whether or not I think this change is substantive enough. Because it does seem like we have a discussion ahead of us on that one. But otherwise I would do a substitute ordinance and then it would be the second year. So you'd get it introduced with all of the changes. But we would change the language to reflect our discussions here tonight.
So, I mean, can we have it?
Yeah, we can.
Finish the discussion here?
We could keep flushing it out now. I mean, we are in a work session and so.
Yeah, because we can't just keep having more readings.
Personally, I would just, you're so close to a very clean document on introduction. So to the extent.
Okay, there's also only five of them here, but whatever. That wins the vote, as long as you guys agree.
Okay, so I guess, does anybody want to jump on us or right away on the one way or the other? So we can have it together?
Yeah, I, I, I didn't hear much disagreement. I was saying that, yeah, stick with, um, for construction of a building that contains at least one dwelling unit.
I agree for the reasons previously stated about economic development we've already been discussing.
On property tax, yeah. Oh, are there only four of them here? Oh, Wendy's on there too. She's so quiet.
I'm just, I'm just concerned if that's going to hamper somebody, but, um, I like the concept of it and I would encourage it.
I would just, I would just say from, you know, from a planning side, a big part of giving incentives is you then get to push those incentives to get the outcomes that you want to see as the community. We're giving you this break, but we want this out of it also at the same time. So it's a give and take on both sides in that way.
And we should be.
We're basically forcing every business that builds a building to put an apartment in there.
If they want a tax break on.
They want, well, they don't want their project to cost them several percent more.
Yeah. If that, I mean, if.
Yeah, that's substantial on it.
If the council.
Eighty dollar building, that's, that's money.
If the council feels that housing is such a big desire in this town that you were, we're going to give this tax break, but we want X out of it.
Are you going to have any minimum standards on that? Or can I have a four by 10?
Efficiently apartment.
With a.
Yeah, that's a living space.
The building code has minimum requirements for dwelling spaces. Like it has to be, a room has to be so big. It has to have sanitation. It has to have cooking, you know? So I mean, there are already minimum requirements for dwellings built into the building code.
Yeah, it does, it just seems like, you know, we talked about incentives, but everything we do is disincentivizing people from doing business. So I mean, it's, it's a tough one for me. If, when I think of incentives, I think, you know, we need to give as many incentives as we can to get as many, as much progress going as we can all over town, whether that's business, housing, whatever, we need to encourage that. Otherwise we're going to go the other direction, which is what we've been doing for, for some time. As you can see by driving up each first or second street with all the closed buildings. So.
Very question.
That's my thoughts on it. Yeah, go ahead, Tom.
So they, and we're, we're still, the tax cap, the $5,000 one invoice is still, still there, right? I mean, that's still.
Not if you're asking for a refund.
So I guess what I'm getting at is when we've talked about, let's say, the million dollar commercial building. But if the electrician comes in and he has a hundred thousand dollar bill and one bill, you meet that $5,000 cap. That's how they pay the taxes, correct?
No, the way that.
Yes, and also subcontractors are exempt as resellers, right? So there's a lot of tax loss there. I'm not taking issue with that. That's a rule you have now. That's under your code now. It'll be under your code later. Single item, the single item distinction and definition, which again applies now, uh, but has been a little confusing on the application, but is in your code right now. Is there for the proposed code as well? So if an individual comes in. So, if an individual comes in, every single item and every single transaction of purchase will be subject or, will, you know, will be eligible for the tax cap. That's, the five thousand dollar tax cap applies.
Except, Holly, except, except in the sense of construction, where my, the construction is considered a, one, the whole project is a bundle, and so there isn't a single item cap. You know, this, the construction exemption is its own beast, I guess, if you wanna say it that way, cause we're not, we're not saying that you only get a tax break on one over five thousand dollar item, you get the tax break on the entire project.
It's everything associated with that building.
Right, but I think what Councilmember, I thi- and correct me if I'm wrong, I think what Councilmember Baylor is saying is, if you're not eligible for the refund applica- if you don't file the refund application, if you're not eligible for the tax cap on that project, those, those other projects will still be eligible for the tax cap on the single items. We're not going to impose a penalty on them, they are going to be taxed like other single items. It's the refund application provides this incredible benefit of T, and I understand, Kevin, I totally agree with you, that benefit of the refund application and the definition of construction materials and services that treats it as one.
No, I, I understand what you and Tom are saying now, yeah.
So, just a, the question, then, if, if I, how does North Star Lumber know whether I'm applying for a refund? How do they know to use that cap?
They don't, they purchase their case.
That's the beauty of it, so they're just gonna tax you.
Right, so it's not, there's not gonna be any limit on them.
Purchaser is going to, the person who obtains the building permit is going to apply for the refund, and they're gonna, they're gonna show you exactly what they paid in taxes, and they'll get a refund.
So, so, North Star Lumber is collecting the tax every minute to the city?
Right, for the whole amount?
Yeah.
So, if I buy a hundred thousand dollar.
Which is such a good deal, because we've bundled the construction materials and services as if they're one item, that's how your code does it now, that's why it's such an incredible exemption, right? Cause you're paying three fifty, but that reason why that's such a significant benefit is because there's no five thousand dollar cap on anything, you just roll it all into one cap.
But say we put this, this amendment in, and somebody isn't putting a, a residential unit in their commercial building. Now, they go pay a hundred thousand dollars at North Star, are they?
Seven thousand in tax.
Are they getting it capped?
They're not paying tax, they're only paying tax, on a hundred thousand dollar with the materials, they're only paying tax on five thousand dollars in one single bill.
But if they don't build the apartment in their billing unit, we're saying that it's not tax exempt, so that it would hit that cap?
No, 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 that's only, that's only if you apply for the tax credit, you're going to prepay building permit. You can just get your building permit, you're not gonna gain any taxes, so, but once you meet the, if I bill you fifty thousand dollars for the plumbing job, I only pay taxes on that up to five thousand dollars. Now, I got a bill for a fifty thousand electrical, I'm only paying taxes on the first five thousand dollars, cause we meet that cap that we have.
So, you'd still be getting a tax break, but you'd be paying the three fifty multiple times?
So, so, North Star would still use the cap on everybody?
No, no, do any cap.
They don't do anything.
Yeah, the, the, they, North Star wouldn't be applying the cap, but the city would still provide the refund for each individual transaction, instead of it being, instead of paying a million dollars for to build a building with a residential unit, and you only pay three hundred and fifty dollars, you build a million dollar building, and then you, you show that I paid a hundred thousand for electrical, so you paid three fifty on that. I paid a hundred thousand for plumbing, you paid three fifty on that. And so, you pay a series of three fifties, instead of only three fifty.
I understand in the end, but if I'm not applying for a refund, because I'm building the net loft, which doesn't have an apartment in it yet, but I bet it will, so, um, then.
Then she's paying all the tax upfront and has the.
All the tax upfront.
You're paying the tax upfront either way.
When does she?
Both, for both.
For both, yeah, so, when this, when the, if, if she can't apply for a refund, because it's a commercial building without a resident in it, then, then she's not been.
She can, she can apply for a refund.
What's that?
Because if, if it's over any of, any billing that she has, that's over five thousand dollars. Once she meets, if the, for her building, if the, if the plumber, again, the bills are fifty thousand dollars, she brings that plumber's bill into you guys, and says, here's my bill, we met the five thousand dollar cap, here's my three hundred and fifty dollars.
Yeah, is that still part of the code?
But this is, but page nine is what we're talking about, right? This additional amendment that says for construction of a building that contains at least one dwelling unit? Isn't that what we're discussing, do we, do we apply that or not? And you're saying, yeah, in the case of the net loft, if we apply that, then she's not eligible for any of those.
And as I, I'm saying, as, as the lumberyard owner, the seller of lumber, how do I know when to stop charging tax? You're saying I don't, I charge a tax on the whole hundred thousand, but then if I'm saying here that I don't get to ask for a refund, if I, if I don't have a dwelling unit.
Right, there are refunds for different reasons.
Any of that seven thousand dollars that I paid for my hundred thousand dollars in lumber back.
You're, you're talking two different programs, Mayor, you, you do get it back. You're talking two distinct different programs, the way it's set up, it doesn't, you go buy a boat engine for forty thousand dollars, you bring in that receipt, you only pay tax on the first five thousand dollars for that boat engine. It's no difference if it's electrical, no difference if it's plumbing.
Currently, I understand.
Then you get it back.
It would be like that.
Just asking, is the new code that we're talking about still have that process?
They will still get the tax cap, the tax cap will still be applied when they file a tax return. We will see, the only thing that changes in that realm is they're going to give us a little bit more information about who got the tax gap, you know, or, actually, I'm sorry, that's true for the exemptions, I won't, I'm talking about the waters. Yes, it's true, the tax cap applies to all single items and all single, uh, transactions of service in the city, and that is the same now as it was before. The only thing that, uh, and so that means when we talk about paying taxes on millions of dollars, that the taxes paid on any item or service in that, you know, in that job are all going to be subject to the cap, and there will be other qualifiers that apply too under a code, and those all still very much apply. But no, there is no, if you had, and the net loft, I'll use that as an example, but it, but it's, let's assume it's being built from scratch, and it was just a commercial building, and there was no dwelling in it, then she would just pay the taxes on all of those services and those items, subject to, uh, which would be subject to the tax cap, as Councilmember Baylor's talking about the engine, right, so, or the service, those will all have the five thousand dollar cap properly applied. But if she decides to put an apartment in the bottom, a studio apartment, or whatever meets that dwelling unit definition, which is, you know, which is, we are not talking about having to be a residential building, just a dwelling unit, uh, within the building, then you're looking at, uh, not only getting, so then you're getting the, she can just pay all of the bills associated with the construction, and submit a refund application for two years of the building for all, for anything and everything beyond three hundred and fifty dollars, so the tax will be capped at three fifty.
So, I guess I'm not, just not seeing the difference, what's the difference in? What's the difference? I don't.
She'll pay three fifty on every thing that gets capped.
Every in, every invoice? Now, you can, so we can't bundle, you can't bundle on a commercial only billing if we pass this amendment?
Exactly, they're gonna just pay the tax on the items, they can't pull them all together and call it construction, materials.
So, that's essentially.
Quote unquote, subject, eligible for the refund application, they're just gonna pay the tax, and they're gonna benefit from the tax cap. Just as if they were buying any other type of, um, goods or services in the city.
I like it.
I still think it's a very, very generous system for anybody.
Would, no matter which program you use, it's very, very generous to the building.
So, before we move on, I'm gonna go back to the accessory structure, one that we did have clarity on, cause I, I think we need to get additional clarity, cause while we've been talking, I realize that we may have overlooked something. Now, we're talking about wanting to promote residences, so, this says accessory buildings. So, that means if you build a single family home, and then you wanna buy, build a detached, you know, accessory dwelling unit, then that would not, you would not get a tax break on the construction of that, under the construction of the services, if we adopted the language saying that accessory buildings just blanket, cause that would include both non-residential and residential accessory buildings. And is that the intent that the council wants to go forward with, where you can get the tax break on your primary home, but not on an accessory dwelling? Or do we want to also include accessory dwellings?
Well, if we're passing option four, four, that says it has to have a, I mean, doesn't that say? Construction of, for construction of a building that contains at least one dwelling in it?
Well, this, this, this one above is, is specific to accessory, accessory structures.
I think it's an excellent, yeah, I, I mean, I do think that's an excellent point, Kevin, I mean, easy fix, I know, so, what I hear Kevin saying is, do we wanna add some language in the option four, uh, restriction on accessory ability, uh, buildings to accept those used for residence? And I will work on that language if that's, if Council wants that, wants to do that. But what we're doing is we're adding extra incentive, and we're also showing them a way that they can take advantage of the exemption by adding a accessory residential unit. Now, that may be, you know, I don't know if that's something that, uh, Council wants to do, but that, that certainly increases the please build us housing.
Let's have a poll, let's run, how?
Yeah, Mayor?
Yeah, uh, was, was that, uh?
Wendy?
Wendy, remember me?
Yeah, yeah, you've been stuck in one spot for a while, so, go ahead, Wendy.
Yeah, no, I didn't, I didn't wanna break into the Tom show, but I really like the idea that, um, we're, we're incentivizing housing, I think that's the bottom line, so, I think if we're gonna incentivize, you know, there's a lot of properties in this town that could add, like a garage with an apartment, or could add, you know, workshop or hangar, or, uh, you know, outbuilding with an apartment, I think it's really important that we keep that incentivization for the housing as part of this.
I was gonna ask, so I agree a hundred percent with that, I think we definitely incentivize obviously more dwellers. But, what you're doing, and maybe Tom might have an answer for this, so, when you're applying for a building permit to build your primary structure, and you have, um, accessory buildings, and you're building something that's also a dwelling, would that be a separate building permit to build an actual dwelling as opposed to just a storage shed? Because we're talking about an occupancy of a person that has to meet certain standards, is that a separate permit?
Kevin's thinking about it. You're saying for a shed, you don't have to.
Well, if it's under twenty square feet, you don't have to have a permit period. I'm trying to think how many permits I've done of where someone's building multiple buildings on their property, and I don't.
At the same time.
And I don't think.
And we're talking a separate building, because it's not under the same roof, multiple dwellings that are the same roof.
Yeah, yeah, I can't think of an example that's happened, at least since I've been here. Typically, people came in to build a single structure, and then if they do build something else on their property, they come back for a permit for that, and later they, I don't, I haven't seen too many people doing, you know, silhouetted construction of multiple structures.
So, if that's the case, we're already covering an additional building permit, somebody would use to be able to pay for their construction and get the cap.
But with this language, it doesn't matter if it's a separate permit, cause it would still be considered an accessory building.
But, fix the word.
So, she's just gonna put residential in there somewhere?
It's just a technicality, really.
Yeah.
It really is just a technicality in the code, like, well.
Yeah, when it comes, yeah, inland use and, like, wording, it's, yeah, it's, it's just, yeah.
So, another comment?
Go ahead.
So, we've all sat as the Board of Equalization, and how many times have we heard people come in and say, but it's not, it's not on a foundation, it's an accessory building, why are you taxing me for it? So, there's that side of it, if it's just a she sent shed, or a he shed, or whatever you wanna call it, no, I don't think she'd get a tax break, but, but if it's gonna have a dwelling unit in it, it's a whole different cap. So, I liked the way it's written, the way Kevin presented it.
With the word residential.
So, clean it up to include residential.
Yep, next topic.
Wait, I, I wanna clarify something, cause I'm, I'm really confused. Back to your question, Mayor, so, if I hear you right, what you're saying is that, because, and maybe this isn't the world, it is in the construction world, but, what I see is when sales tax stuff comes back in, they have already put the exemptions on, so they've capped?
Now or new?
Right now, right now.
Yeah.
If there's a cap, capped item, the business takes care of the cap.
Okay, so now we're saying, and I think what you're trying to get to is that we have two different businesses going, ways of going on here, right? So, one is you get the construction material where it's only one, three, it's one cap on everything.
For the whole project.
But there's gonna be people who maybe don't have that, so how does North Star know?
Who don't?
The person's gonna have to tell them, and if they have to call the city, they call the city.
No, but don't they just pay the tax, North Star, North Star is collecting the tax?
Yeah, up to the cap.
Pay the tax.
Up to the cap.
I'm not.
Up to the cap right now.
Right, but that's, right, and that's not changing, so when they're going for the refund application, they're showing you what they've paid. It doesn't mean that they're paying more than the cap, they're showing you what they've paid, and then if they fill out their, and they're gonna pay just like, they're gonna get the, they're still gonna get the sales tax cap on single items or single transaction of service. We're not taking something from them when they do the refund application, but when they apply, they're only going to be eligible to get back taxes paid.
Okay, so, if the net loft builds a building with a house in it, or dwelling in it, they pay seven percent on every, the whole amount? And if I only wanna build a building that doesn't have a dwelling in it, I still have to pay seven percent on everything, which is not how we, which is not how it's done now, and then come in and re- apply to get the single item tax break? I think that's what you are trying to get to.
There's confusion there still.
I'm not sure now, I don't know.
Right, yeah, they cut, they apply, and they pay their, they show they pay their three fifty, they pay the tax cap, they probably paid more than that, and then they have their refund.
Right now is that we keep saying they pay all their taxes, they don't get capped at the store.
The vendors.
No, 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 they get capped, they get, the sales tax cap applies, it is a separate thing, it applies to every single item and every single transaction, right? In the city, like it applies, except unless we specify, but we, so that applies. And they pay it, and this is very similar to what's happening now, remember, right now, you have a choice between these two systems. You can still choose to come in and do the refund application right now under your code, right? So, what happens is, they pay, or it's capped, and then they come in and they fill out their refund application, which is going to treat all of the, they're gonna say, here's all my re, all my construction materials and services subject to the refund, and we're gonna look, and the tax will, the cap will have been applied to all of those, just like the other taxpayer, just like the other, and, and then we'll calculate what taxes they paid above and beyond the three hundred and fifty dollars, and then the single item sales tax cap is a separate thing. That's where we're looking at, that the, that the sellers will apply based on, to both, in most situations, based on, this is a five thousand dollar item, this is a, you know, ten thousand dollar service.
They were already capped at the store, what are they applying for?
In, in a big construction project, you only have to pay the three fifty once, so you're showing that you paid it ten times, and you get nine back, nine times three fifty.
If you're only building a building without a house in it, you can't apply for that.
If you're building a building without a house, then you just get the cap on each item, you pay the cap times nine. The other guy gets to come in for refund.
But that is done at the store.
Yes.
So, to the store clerk, uh, but to the North Star Lumber, it's the same as he's doing it now, except he's not gonna accept any business. it's the same as he's doing it now, except he's not gonna accept any business, there, there isn't gonna be any tax exempt card that somebody can flash him. Everybody's gonna be taken the same, just like they don't have a tax exempt card.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's the clarification you need.
We were, I think we were just saying it wrongly, when we were saying that someone's paying all of their taxes. They're paying all their taxes up to that cap, and then they can come back and get the refund for each individual cap back if they do a building permit.
No, if they have to.
Right, they are not getting the benefit of the, the refund application, or I guess, and I, I don't want to use the word bundle transaction, because I might confuse us with the bundle transaction, but we have basically decided that construction materials and services that fit within this very specific definition, right, are one item. That's the best way to see it. And if you could fit within that definition, you'll get $350, even if it's $5 million, right? But the thing is, it won't likely be $5 million, because you are, when you pay the tax, gonna be subject to the tax cap, which is a second, separate benefit that we provide in Cordova.
You got a good deal, but you don't get the smoking deal. You just get the cap on several things.
You know, this is why a Q&amp;A sheet with examples is gonna be really beneficial to the public.
Just another, another footnote is a lot of materials and a lot of things are bought out of town now. The out-of-town vendors are not gonna say, oh, you have a Cordova tax cap. They're gonna charge you the tax, and you're gonna have to pay it, and you're gonna have to come in and get a, get a refund, regardless what program you're on. Because the out-of-town vendors aren't, aren't gonna acknowledge City of Cordova's tax cap. They're just gonna bill you, your Amazon, everybody else.
No, A, no, if AML...
According to the Remote Sellers Tax Commission, though.
Yeah, if they're really...
Hopefully, they're gonna start seeing that.
No, they absolutely don't.
Right, they're not gonna, they're not gonna say, oh, you have this special tax cap, so we're only gonna tax, if you buy $6,000 items from Amazon, Amazon's gonna charge you tax on $6,000. They're not gonna say, oh, you have this cap, we're only gonna charge you $350. You know what I'm saying?
Well, AML understands our cap. They, they know how to apply it to the remote vendor.
Okay, that'll be interesting to see.
In theory.
What's happening right now?
You know, that's the commission, that's the Remote Sell, Sellers Tax Commission. So we don't really know, I mean, Susan, what kind of reports do we get out of the commission in that regard?
We get reports, we get quarterlies that, or monthly even. They show caps, they, they understand our cap, I think.
Doesn't happen very frequently, but yes.
Yeah, you're not buying a $15,000 tiny house on Amazon, although they do have those.
And I will say one really good thing, we've been working with them pretty closely on your amendments, and so I, I feel like that's, that they've been really helpful, and that's helped everybody understand.
Okay, so, I guess just to, I think we have talked...
Bundling.
We have to talk this through. So are we, but before we move, are we adding this, or no? I think that's the question that we started with.
Are we adding it with an exception for ADUs?
No, I think we're back down, we're back down to the...
So what I'm, I'm gonna notice, is this right? And maybe I could just get confirmation. I have add Option 4, which is the language regarding accessory buildings and excluding them, but to limit that, as Kevin suggested, to allow for accessory buildings that are used for, by, for a residency, and also add the limitation that it's for construction of a building that contains at least one dwelling in it.
Right.
Yes.
Is that correct?
What is the second part of 4? Did we discuss that?
That's what we need just, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
If we're good with that?
Yeah.
Think so? Next topic?
Oh, bundled, oh god, I hate that word.
Okay, so just to follow suit, because we've been talking about these optional amendments, when we're talking about bundled transactions, one thing I'm going to emphasize today, and it is emphasized in the worksheet as well, is what's the difference between a bundled transaction and a single item, right? And that is something we do not really talk that much about. And in the examples that council member of the administration put forward, I realize this is probably gonna be confusing. So we really tried, because it confused me, and we actually did talk about Sales Tax Commission about this a little bit. So I'm gonna talk about all three of these things together, and hopefully that is not as a disaster. If it is, we will abort and go and talk one by one. But I think this will be helpful. So when we're talking about bundled transactions, most importantly, we need to know that we are actually talking about taking separate products, which are independent products, and bundling them together. When we're talking about a single item, which sometimes has implications for manufacturing, right? We're talking about taking raw materials, which also can be separate items, and creating something that, so when we bundle, we put parts together, we get, put items together to simply bundle them and create a new whole. But when we create an item, which sometimes will involve services, we are taking items and services and putting them together to create a new thing. And the reason why this is important is it's very easy to lose sight of where we're talking about. So I'll give you an example. If I have, if I'm a shop and I'm selling a bunch of wood, right? And then I, and I charge a certain amount, and then I'm a shop and I sell a bunch of wood, and I all, and I will turn that into a picnic table for you, right? Or I'm a shop and I just sell a picnic table. So the question becomes, well, is the picnic table a bundled transaction? Because it's a bunch of wood, and the service is of putting that wood together to make a picnic table. And you can apply this to anything. You can apply this to sewing a quilt, you can apply this to, um, I'm sure you all can come up with a thousand examples, just about everything we use or buy in some way involves some element of service. So it's really important that we wrap our brain around this. And that we, as, when I worked with the administration and the Remote Sellers Commission, to really come up with clear, bright lines, which did involve some policy considerations. But, so basically, the way that we approach this is, if I am a shop, and I sell wood, and I sell, and I sell things made from wood, like picnic tables or sheds, the ser, the, the picnic table I sell, even if it's made from the wood in my shop, is an item, right? The service is important to that item, but it really was part of manufacturing the, the end result, the new product. There was no picnic table before my services. So that is a single item, and that will be taxed as a single item. So if you have a picnic table that's $10,000, it will be taxed on the first $5,000 for the picnic table. If I am a shop and I sell a bunch of wood and a bunch of other things that people buy to build their own picnic tables, then each of those products that I am, that I am selling is subject to the tax. And wood may become very expensive, but I don't think any of the wood is likely to hit the $5,000 mark for every 2x4, for every, right? Those are all gonna be taxed and subject to the single, or the sales tax cap separate. So here is the piece that gets a little bit different. So let's say I am a shop, I sell wood, and I also say, if you buy, you can buy all the wood here, but I, or you can bring in your own wood, but I, I will assemble, I will create from that product a picnic table for an additional $2,000. So at this point, we have an identifiable, separate, and distinct service. Under the definition for bundled transactions, which is a similar definition pretty much used throughout the country, we now have something that looks a lot like a bundled transaction. So what we did is, that basically allows us to tax that service, because it's being identified as a separate and distinct service, it has a specific amount, a fee we can see, right, and identify, and that the seller has chosen to take out from the product. So using this model, and this comes into play with fishing nets, right? You can go, you can walk through it in the same way. You have a lot of, you have a shop that sells all the products you need to make a fishing net. If you go in and you buy the products and you're going to assemble it yourself, then that will be, each one of those products, which is a separate, single item, will be subject to the tax and separately the tax cap. If you go in and there's a service fee that you can pay to have them assemble or hang the net, then, and I can see the fee, then that fee will be treated as a single transaction of service, and the products will all be treated as single items. If they put a net on the, on the shelf and say, this net costs $10,000, and we do not see the service fee, right, and the products are, that is, you know, even if they say, you can pick your own products, and that's an important distinction, even if they're like, it's made to order, you build it. But if they are not separating out the service fee, if I cannot walk in and have the service and know what the service fee is and pay the service fee, then that is gonna be treated as a single item, because they just manufacture the net. And it is not clean, and it is not clear, it's not easy to understand, but I think we got it to the place that it is best, like, I think this is the cleanest it gets, because of the nature, yes.
So I'm sorry to muddy it, but, you know, you did talk about the packages as far as, like, the travel and adventure packages. And, you know, that's something specific, you are creating something new. Because when you put those separate entities together, they're getting a discount in the same, they're getting a different experience than they would if they just came and stayed in a hotel. There's, there's the hotel tax, there's the sales tax, there's the transportation tax that we're talking about now. So, you know, to unbundle that package is unrealistic, because that's what, that's actually the only way that Logix can make an income, is to bundle, is to put together services, offer a package, within that package a discount, and that encourages the customer to come and stay longer, it encourages the customer to come in and do more items together, because you're putting it together. If you were to pick those apart and tax each one of those entities, you're basically putting us out of business.
Okay, well, and I wanna, and thank you for those comments. I think those are really important comments. And then to sort of parse through them, I think there's a strong policy component of those comments, and then there's a legal component that I can address. And then the policy component, I think it would be great to hear councils, you know, for council to discuss that. Because when you say you're putting us out of business, that's a very important thing that council will, of course, want to consider. But I will say this, so I want everyone to think of like a gift basket. That is the fundamental, if you look up, if you Google bundled transactions, half the time a picture of a gift basket will come up, because it's the most, it's sort of the most basic explanation, you know, like, way that we show a bundle. And in that picnic basket, or in that basket, you may have a ton of different services, you may even have certificates for services, you have different foods, some are taxable, some are not taxable. But really, the person buying the basket wants the full experience of the basket. It may even have things in there they can't get anywhere else, except for the basket, right? But it's the fun, it's the grouping of those things together, and the interplay of those things that give it great value to some, and that's why they purchase it. And so I think that one of the, the definition of bundled transactions, you know, that comes from the Remote Sellers Tax Commission, and they have adopted it. And that definition is mirrored throughout the country. And one of the, this concept of the different services, like a car or hotel, and a, it's not to undermine the value of those services or the value of bundling them together to create a greater experience. So there's your creation. I'm not arguing that there's not creation of that. But I think that it's not the creation of a single item, it's the creation of the bundled transaction, right? So because, and it's not because each of those components doesn't come together to create a better and wholly different whole, it's because you're not creating a single item. Like, with manufacturing, you're taking raw materials, and you're putting them together to create an item. The concept of services and you're being bundled together, those create an experience, but it doesn't, they're not raw materials. Those are sort of refined materials that are creating a bundled experience. So if we could, if we mostly had experiences, I think that would even make the, the concepts of the home net and the picnic table goes easier too. But it's the combination, really, of the product, that goods and services, where we start to see, you know, where we have to pay attention to a single item versus a bundled transaction. So right now, the way the city's code is written, I mean, and one of the things to remember is, right now, the city's code is written to impose these rules on taxation. There's been some confusion on how they're applied, but it, the attempt to ensure that it is not, that it doesn't tax, you know, that sales tax cap does not apply to bundled services and goods, and those billed as a lump sum, that's already in the code. So we have not changed the language in that way to change the scope of the taxation. That's another thing to know. But I, I think I've talked enough. I mean, I think right now, this really is a conversation for council on the, on the bundled transaction component, policy-wise.
Council?
Well, I guess I, my question is, to staff, is how often do you get asked to kind of make a judgment call on certain transactions? Do vendors come to you and say, does this count or does this not count?
They do it the way that makes the biggest benefit to them.
And you see that in a...
We have seen some businesses that do this, pay a certain amount of sales tax, and then as they learn maybe what they can do instead, that number has dropped off dramatically in subsequent years. Maybe their business dropped off dramatically, but I think not. So it's enforcement, I guess, if they were doing it the right way at the beginning.
I'm just thinking, you don't really have any way of knowing kind of which transactions are applying, they just send you that, that one sales tax report, right?
Right, I, yeah, I haven't...
That's, that's kind of the issue that we've had, is the, like Holly said, we, we've always had it this way, but nobody has done it the way that it should be done. When we get the tax returns from people, we're not getting itemized lists. They're just submitting a piece of paper saying, I have X amount of exempt transactions. We don't know what they are, and we've never taken, well, not never, I can't speak to that, but...
Well, it did change, and they are supposed to itemize exemptions now, but not everybody does.
And we have, we haven't used the staff resources or city resources to audit and dig deeper. It's kind of just been the businesses submitted, and we accept it.
But this code allows us to put some of that itemized requirements to be happening. We just have to make it happen.
Right.
And that's where the, you know...
And again, like Holly said, nothing, nothing is actually changing. This code is not changing the way that we tax people in that sense. We just haven't, we as the city and people as businesses have not done it, heard what the code says it should, should be done.
Everything we've been reviewing is truly just clarification of what bundled and single is. So in the past, we've had a requirement for folks to show an itemized list, so if somebody doesn't, they're asking for a break. They just denied it, they denied one?
We've had a...
They're not asking for a break, they're just remitting what they've collected, or they said they collected.
They have chosen to exempt what they believe is exempted, and I guess we kind of accepted it, not questioned.
They're self-reporting.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're all self-reporting, and we don't do any random business audits?
There was, wasn't there a piece of this that maybe at one point was going to require register, uh, receipts, full-on, yeah, from your calc, uh, why can't I think of the word? Cash register tapes.
Your account records, yeah.
Yeah.
And asking that, when somebody shows an exemption card and you list it, what, what it, what card is it, and what did you apply it to?
But some businesses do that, I mean, AC has that. But some businesses do that. I mean, AC has that list, right? The grocery stores do.
Yeah.
And but for some businesses that do this kind of thing, they don't have cash registers, so that wouldn't work. What do you ask for with their tax?
Accounting report. I mean, they, Folks' Square or QuickBooks or.
Right. It's kind of all beaten, fixed too.
And I will say to that point, we did require more specific reporting, but we didn't go so far. In the first draft, I don't know if councilor remembers, the first draft I gave you required quite a bit of accounting and backup data. And we, we dialed that back a little bit, but really walked through and made sure we kept, for the tax return purposes, a lot of the crucial information that not only allows you to identify who has the exemption for enforcement purposes, but also for analysis. But the hope was that next time you guys are looking at your tax code, that your, your city manager will be sitting there telling you, well, this is how much, this exemption costs the city. This is how much this exemption costs the city. And this is, and this is the incentivized conduct we saw occur, or this is the benefit of that. You know, so you can make ass, the city goes on, you will make even better, more deliberate decisions because you have the data for it. And that's a theory.
No, that's a good theory.
One thing I will also say is, so it's currently in your code, it's 540030Y2, and that governs resale and the resale exemption. And so it's just, I'm just going to read you the language. I just, it's important. I, I just want to make sure, and I think we'll have to emphasize this with the public too, that it's understood, we did not change the intention of the code regarding bundled transactions. We've just given it a name and clear, bright lines that mirror the lines given by the Remote Sellers Tax Commission, which not only applies to Cordova, but all of those other jurisdictions in that commission, which is the, I don't want to say the majority of jurisdictions, but I think it's, it's a lot. It's, I think more than, more taxing jurisdictions than not, I'm pretty sure. But anyway, the language of that provision or that exclusion from the exemption says, "Goods, wares, or merchandise that can be purchased only as part of a package purchase of services, such as a bed and breakfast or a fishing or hunting charter, and not by the general public as separate and individual items are not exempt under this chapter." So that was the, the code really trying to verbalize expressly these sort of bundled transactions. And they did it again in the, in identifying the tax cap where it says, "This exemption does not apply to cumulative purchases and billed as a lump sum." But all of these things you can see, my immediate thought was, we could start pooping holes in that, in those, you know, and the extent of them or the definition. So the bundled transaction really just puts us in the same world as other taxi jurisdictions. And there's cases on bundled transactions, what is and is not a bundled transaction. You know, we have, we have a lot to work with there and will likely, after the adoption of this definition, get guidance from other jurisdictions in Alaska too because certainly this will be challenged. You know, over time, people will question the scope. But one of the things that I don't, so there's, so that's the legal piece. But one of the things that, you know, outside of that legal piece is the, what is the impact on the industry that we're talking about? And, you know, I, I think that's a discussion outside my, you know, outside my purview. So I don't know if we want to have that discussion now, if that is something council wants to say for when we're in front of a public hearing. I know it's an important one. I just, I want to check in on that piece.
Go ahead, Tom.
The bundling thing. But I, I think I understand the example of the picnic table or the net where if you come in and you buy the supplies from the net, you pay for them, then you come in the next day and say, I want you to build me this net. Now you pay taxes on the materials and you pay taxes on the services of building it. Or you walk in and say, I want that net built and this is the product I want, you just pay one, one shot, right? So that's just one time you're going to pay tax on the finished product. But I'm not understanding, if you come to a lodge and it's, it's $5,000 and included in that is pick up at the airport and they're going to give you lodging and food, but for another $150 we'll take you sightseeing, does that fall under the $5,000 cap, that extra $150? Or are you saying anything beyond that initial package, they're going to have to pay a sales tax on it?
Well, I mean, it really depends on the, the business, right? So if they say, we have a lodge, you can come stay at our lodge for, for $300 a night. And you can, you can get, you can access a water taxi for $50 a day. And we have rental car services available and you can pay $150 for a tour, right? And all of those things are separate. All of those things would be taxed separately, right? And that, I think we're all, we're all good there. So what happens when you're a lodge, you have all of those things, and then you also say, for $10,000 or $5,000 or whatever it is, we have the following package. It includes a three-day hunting trip while you're at the lodge. We will also, it includes all of your meals and it includes a, a, I don't know, a museum tour, you know, or some other aspect, and you're putting it all together. Or we are a hunting charter and for $5,000, that includes the stay at the lodge and air travel to and from the hunt and a guide, right? So the question is, can I separate them out, right? Can I separate out the cost of the airfare? Could someone buy that separately? Is that, and would it be cheaper if, so that's the other thing. So there's an analysis that we go through under the definition. But we have to go through, are these two or more products separate and distinct and identifiable? And are they sold for one non-itemized price? Now, that will not, it's not a bundled transaction if the sales price will, is negotiable or varies based on the selection by the purchaser of the products and the transaction because we can see them and we can separate them out, right? So it's a bundled transaction if we can't. But if it's one itemized price and they're clearly distinct and identifiable things and an air, like a, a airplane trip and a overnight stay are considered distinct and identifiable things because I can go into your market and I can buy each of those components. But that's not to take away from the, the benefit and value of combining them to create, you know, a much more, you know, a, a better experience, right? A more robust product. But that doesn't change the fact that we can identify them and they're distinct and identifiable. And that's how it's been defined and interpreted by the Remote Sellers Tax Commission under this, and we did check, we checked to make sure, we gave them this exact example. And we said, this is what we were, this is, when we look at this definition, this is how it applies, and they agreed. So a couple of things to note, and this is in your definition for bundled transaction. Again, the definition is exactly verbatim what was adopted by the Remote Sellers Tax Commission, which we are a part. And the city, we have an obligation as a member of that commission to adopt those changes effective January 1st, 2025. So, but a couple of things to note is a, so the term distinct and identifiable does not include packing or packaging, and it doesn't include a product that's provided free of charge. So if you have a product that's free of charge, if they require purchase of another product, and there's no vary, variation in the purchase price, you know, whether you include it or don't include it, the price doesn't change, then that doesn't turn something into a bundled transaction.
I think that, I think that the conversation would be important to have with the public with this specific business type, only because of the direct impact that taking the tax cap away and the bundling definition is going to have on the service-based industries. So I, I just think that really a conversation where the public's more involved or has the potential to be more involved would be important around this because, you know, it's, the packaging aspect of the lodging adventure experience is, is a key player. And I think, you know, the, the loss of the utilization of being able to use the tax cap on a package is going to be a big hit to, you know, and we've come to the city, we've asked for definitions, we've participated in conversations, you know, this is what we're doing, are we doing it right? Are we charging the right amount of tax? Are we using the tax cap okay? You know, it's not that we're trying to skirt the system, it's just that the interpretation has been different every single time the question is asked. And I think having a conversation with the folks that are utilizing this is going to be important to understanding what it's going to do to the business in the future.
No, I think that's an excellent point. And one of the things council really does need to be aware of is we may have people out there who are paying the tax properly. I mean, I hope, in many ways, you know, as a lawyer, I hope we do, right? But at the same time, this conversation makes it clear that it has not been uniformly applied in that way, which is one of the reasons why it's very important to have clean, clear, consistent code and enforcement. But it is, we need to be cognizant of that. When we're having a conversation with the public, we just need to be cognizant of the fact that currently our code would by its language require these to be, you know, taxed and subject to the same, the sales tax cap by each individual component.
Yeah, and I think that, again, that's an interpretation for the experience, you know, for the, the end product. That's where, that's where you're coming into the issue. You know, is the basket, the put-together basket is an end product. The put-together adventure package is an end product. But there's a difference in interpretation of that definition. I think that's inherently where the problem is lying.
So what, 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 what would you like to see, Wendy? Do you want to?
The Wendy Show.
The Wendy Show.
Hey now, buddy, you've had your turn. You just sit down there and use your hair.
Yeah, and he threw contractors under the bus. She's doing opposite.
I don't, I don't know. I think, I think the bottom line is, the argument is not whether or not we're changing something. The argument is, there's never been a clear interpretation where as a business owner, you can come in. We've come in and said, this is what we do.
Right.
And use the tax cap. And then we've been told yes, or we've been told, okay, that's how it works. As, as a customer purchasing for an exemption card for resale, I, can I buy, can I put, you know, a paper plate on my thing? No, but then you turn around and the next exemption card considers that part of their entire package when they sell. There is so much open for interpretation. Every single person that uses these exemptions gets a different interpretation. I say, we take all exemptions away, charge 5% sales tax, and let's go home. Well, I'm home, but you know what I mean.
That's fine. Well, after we analyze if that's.
It is also an option.
The right amount of money.
I think until we get serious about having some, some kind of a enforcement or auditing system, I think we're, we're still going to end up with, you know, a year from now, people doing it their way and submitting their reports and us accepting it and accepting the check and going on.
I think we have to be able to, if we don't have a definition that's clear, written out, and agreed upon, we'll never get there. You're right. That's why we're here right now.
Exactly. If it hasn't been clear in the past, that's why we're doing this.
So once we have this clear definition, and I will say the food tax exemption card is pretty clear. That was in paper, the resale one. It's very clear now. I think it was very clear before, but. So now we're gonna, you know, we need to make sure that when they get used at a store, it's labeled as a food thing, and we tell the store, no, you don't get to take paper. But it's how we have a definition, you're right. We will just be doing the same thing over and over again. So we have to do this part to get to where you want to be, where you get the right, the same answer every time you come to the city.
And like with the construction and services, we, out of these conversations that we're having now, that's our hope is we can get a clear definition so we can put a document together that this is how it's interpreted and we can just hand that out. It's not each, each person at the front desk that's new saying this is what they think it is. Here is the document. But we need to know from the council, so what is the definition we want and what does it mean?
Well, I was just guessing, do, could, could we ask the city of Seward, the city of Homer, Ketchikan, I mean, some other coastal communities of tourism, how they deal with this? I mean, we can't be the first ones to.
But do we have an option of not having this definition? If this definition of bundled is in Remote Sellers Commission code, do we have an option of not using this or not? We don't have an option, right?
Well, I mean, that's the thing that, yes and no. This is in their code. They enacted that code. It applies to remote sellers. Anybody who's a remote seller in Cordoba is already being subject to this definition. Currently, your code, in my opinion, very clearly, and I, and I'm not, this is not a comment on how it's going to fly, but very clearly identifies these differences, that, right, it applies in essence a bundled transaction component. So that's where we stand. We have a mandate as a member of the commission to adopt the changes that they have proposed effective January 1st, 2025. Now, they work with the city, they give us a lot of flexibility. A great example is construction materials and services definition and the refund application. That's Cordoba's, right? That's, nowhere else has that exact system or definition. We're creating that. And then they will apply it. But the bundled transactions definition derived from many jurisdictions not having clear definitions. And so, and not having clear definitions to figure out how to apply it to remote sellers. And so they adopted some bundle transaction definition, and we need to adopt that definition. So what I, what I think is being proposed is, can we then argue that the package charters fall outside of that definition? I really think that's what is being proposed. So no, we're not.
Thank you.
Right? So, and, and so unfortunately, those services and those packages are one of the bundled transactions, and as for lack of a better word, that this was created to identify, especially in Alaska. So we have a lot of bundled transactions that fall outside of, they're kind of live in that virtual world. All these techno, technological products that we are now buying, streaming and, and sort of these virtual components, that's another reason why bundled transactions has become such a hot ticket topic. But for Alaska, for those other communities you're talking about, they are all grappling with it for the reason of, we have these package services, you know, we want to make sure we're applying taxes. So whether or not that, what that means, all I'm saying is, if we're going to say that we don't want this to apply to charters, I would just want to take that conversation back to the Remote Sellers Tax Commission and figure out and make sure we are not violating our requirements under our agreement with the, as a member of the Remote Sellers Tax Commission. You know, because they have said, here are our changes that we enacted, that's done. They go into effect January 1st, you need to adopt them, you know? And that's part of what we agreed to do. And I think that the benefit to that is the money that they collect, right, for the remote sellers.
So what I'm hearing is that actually, in a sense, you know, the businesses that are affected by this should be the ones talking to the Remote Seller Commission and the Remote Sales Tax Commission and trying to work with the definition. And the city needs to just do what they've put forth and, you know, our argument's not with the city. do what they've put forth, and, you know, our argument's not with the city, it's with the adoption of the definition.
Yes, and the other piece is the municipal league, you know, Wendy's, because we act as sort of this unified front through the Remote Sellers Tax Commission, then it has this added weight, right, even outside, because we are doing something as to part of our taxed population. Part of our taxpayers are paying tax according to these rules, and in order to comply with the constitutional provisions, we have to make sure our rules align. So they actually have a lot more say in your tax policy than maybe, you know, maybe we originally that, I don't know, but, and so that is, yes, I do think having that conversation is a good one to have. And even proposing an amendment, if someone wanted to do that for the commission, that's something we can do too. You know, they take up amendments all the time, not all the time, but I think, Susan, what is it, about once a year or more?
I have no idea. I don't know.
All right, well, I feel like we're at least on round four, three or four of amendments that we reviewed in the basement, if that's helpful.
Okay, thank you Holly, I appreciate it.
Anything else on bundled transactions?
Well, what are we doing? I mean, I'm sorry, no one's going to say it, I'm going to say it. Haven't we wanted to get money from outside sources? What is tourism? What is tourism? It's money from outside sources. Outside of town.
Yes, and it's also the highest taxed activity in Cordoba, and.
And it doesn't stop any of us from staying in a hotel.
And someone keeps taxing on taxes to the tourists, and they're not going to pay to come here anymore.
Ever, hey.
We have flight tax, we have transportation tax, we have bed tax, we have sales tax. At some point, you cannot tax your way out of everything by taxing every tourist industry. There has to be a cutoff at some point, and I think, yes, we want to monopolize on the people coming in, but it's expensive to get here in the first place, and we are already the highest taxed going into, those folks coming into town, at least through us. I'm not talking about the fishermen that come into town and fish, and stay on their boat and leave town. I'm talking about the tourist industry where we're bringing them into town, we're giving them housing, we're providing food, we're having them do an excursion. We are already at a very high tax load, according to the city with this. And, you know, yes, I agree that as a property owner, it shouldn't settle back on the year-round property employees, but you also have to move things around a little bit and divvy it out, and this one, you know, is going to, is going to really change us. And, you know, obviously, I mean, please understand, being one of the higher taxpayers on the city's rolls, you know, there's a lot going on here, involved in getting people to want to come to Cordoba, and when you push that tax limit up and up and up and up, at some point, you reach the saturation point where you cannot offer the product affordably for people to come here.
And I think too, that the number of people staying at Wendy's Business or going with Alaska Building and Sewell as a segment of our whole tourist population, that's a pretty small group.
But, but any tourist is paying 13% at an Airbnb or a hotel.
Yeah, which.
They're not getting capped.
If I could ask you a question, you can answer or not, when you sell a package, it is 7%, do you, do you break out the housing on that to get to the additional bed tax, or is that just all in 7% to the cap?
No, our packages have a separate tax because there's a separate tax on beds.
Okay.
Though, you know, our, our, a package is not a 7% sales tax, because there's housing involved, and there's a different tax base on bed tax and housing, so.
So you're breaking the housing value out?
There's a formula involved in that, so, yeah, it's, you know, it's, it's just going up there.
Yeah. I think moving forward though, again, what we're.
And I just want to make sure everybody understands, we talked about this before, but I just, I just want to make sure this isn't, when we have a bundled transaction that is not eligible for the tax cap bundled, we, we preserve the ability of the seller to unbundle it, so that they can get the benefit of the tax cap on each of the components, right, of each of the items. That's clear, right? I just want to make sure everybody is clear, so that, let's say you have a package, and housing comes to, you know, about, housing comes to 6,000 or something, that gets the benefit of the, and actually, it's, well, the sales tax, that's, each item is going to get the benefit of the sales tax cap for that item.
The problem is.
And it won't be the same as the one I always.
You don't meet the sales tax, you don't meet the cap unless you're building the bundle, that's the, that's the problem. A lot of times.
Okay.
Unless you have the bundle. Now we're up to 5,000, it used to be 3,000, now we're at 5,000. So, you know, you're, you're again accommodating for that. And I, you know, I think, you know, I've learned from this that the conversation needs to be more with the Remote Sellers Tax Commission, you know, and it's, it's more, I like just to just see something cohesive, written down and defined, so that I know when I go in to pay my sales tax, the other vendor in town, or another vendor in town, or somebody coming in is going to be taxed the same way, and that's all I'm looking for at this point.
Well, and I do think it's not just another vendor in town, I mean, yes, there'll be different tax rates, but the application of the tax, and I can get you a list, Susan, can we work together to get a list, actually, to, for the next, we can show you what, who the members are of the Remote Sellers Tax Commission. Just so you have an idea, I mean, I can tell you, I know it's the Kenai Peninsula Borough, I know it's Wassila, and it's, it's most of the large, it's all of the communities on the peninsula, I believe, it's certainly Seward, I believe it's all of the larger communities up north, and it's Juneau, and it's, you know, but I don't know, I believe it's L E, so I'll, we'll just get you a list though, so you can see, because they may have different tax rates, but at least you'll know that they'll have uniformed tax application. Would that be helpful for the public?
Yeah, I think that would be helpful, you know, because again, everybody's got their own little specialties. It's very expensive to get to Cordoba, we don't have a road option, if we don't have a ferry, you have to fly. So, you know, there's a lot of variables in the whole thing. So I think it would be helpful though to see who's, who's in that grouping.
Okay. I'll make, we'll make sure that that's in there.
Are we good with that one for tonight?
Yes.
Yes, what are we doing?
Okay.
Okay, I feel like that's all I really had, I hope that the bundled transaction single item discussion together worked, but we can, you know, that's something to think about and touch base with the administration, just to make sure that when we're talking and having this conversation with the public, in addition to the Q and A's and the worksheets, you know, I am talking about it in a way that they can press. So, and that is not an insult to the public, it is an insult to tax law and code. So, I want to make sure I bring that in a digestible way. But otherwise, those were, and I'll check in with the administration, but those were really, those were the components the council asked to have, to have brought back in this work session. Are there additional questions? Are there pieces that we missed? Are there other chapters or sections you want to delve into, which we, which I absolutely can do, and I think it's within the scope if anyone wants to go there.
I'd say make those changes, bring back the substantive ordinance, and we'll read it two more times.
Done. Got it?
All right.
So I guess I'll talk to you tomorrow, Holly.
Yeah.
All right. Sounds great.
Okay, thank you Holly.
That's good, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Sorry for making you guys sit down.
Educational. It was very educational.
Spread the word. Got some softening in there. Let's talk about the budget, Sam.
All right.
Should I have Dr. Sanders call in?
Yeah, you can let her know.
Okay.
Susan hasn't updated paper for.
Oh.
What happened?
Yeah, my phone has been.
Oh, they didn't add up?
Nope.
Just the one spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Was it just that one number that was?
No.
I didn't, I just took that one, I had it in my head.
Yeah, 2025 was adding up correctly, so if you were.
Did you go to?
Yeah.
Hey, citizen is separate from the updated agenda I'm looking at?
Did you email?
Yes.
I did.
Oh, shoot. I'm going to email it to Wendy and Tom right now. Sorry.
My mind's not looking.
I don't have any messages.
This one added to 7, but it should be 300.
Oh, I do, I do.
You do?
I do.
Okay. Okay, so I guess we'll start with the grant one, Wendy and Tom, because that one is correct, except for, the good news is, the $1.5 million match for Second Street gets kicked down around 26th. So we only have a $225,450 match in fiscal year 25 for Second Street. We did have our meeting today, we discussed the MOU and the increases, and it's very similar to the harbor where, you know, four years ago, things are at a very different cost rate, and the project has not expanded, nothing has been added, actually, a few things have been pared down, so that's where we're at right now with that particular one. So we can budget that match, I, we still have funds coming from NDE, they have not completely paid their match, we still have $90,000 coming from them. I think we will meet some wishes to see if we can get some more funds for the project. But in fiscal year 26, we will have to, and it may be less, they kind of went back through their agenda, they have a new engineer on staff, the state is struggling to keep people, and so now we have a contracted engineer, but they're very familiar with the project, they've been involved since the beginning, so that's a good thing. So hopefully.
Sam, what was that number? What was that match number?
The one that we have for 25?
Yes.
225,450, 225,450.
Instead of 1.5?
Yes.
The 1.5 will still be a match, but not until 2026?
Right.
For a separate portion of the project?
Yeah. This is utilities.
Yes.
Yes, utilities. The 1.5 is construction, thus the large amount. So we will need to talk about and think about the 1.5 as time moves forward. I am still waiting for the white shed, again, the stip was redone, and things were moved around, they're still trying to get a handle on where that's at, to see if we will have a match fiscal year 25 or it will be in 26.
It did sound like the construction contract did come in under budget, because he said that it was originally budgeted for 17, and it came in at 14 something, based on the numbers he showed us today.
Yeah, so we'll see where that lands. And then the other grants are the EMPG, up under FIRE EMS, Code Blue, we do not, as of today, do not, we will not have a match, well, we'll have the $675 for a match for Code Blue. The EMPG, the second one, under FIRE EMS, is the contract for emergency management services, that Heather currently is paid half from us and half from the state, she's a contract employee. And the SHP, that was a.
It's another emergency.
Management, and it's still at 1,250. Yes, okay, we just had no discussion today. So what we do is we add all these up, and we do the transfer to the general fund in the final budget, so of course, this is going to go down substantially.
Is that, is that transfer from, you say from general fund, is that? This is the general fund, so is that?
Well, in the budget, remember, we have that line up there, this is how, this is where we put the grant matches, it's 401,390, and so we.
So you've got income there somewhere. Where is that?
This is how we're making our grant matches, so there's the line that can either come out general fund or can come out of whatever the council determines.
Hey, Sam, what's Code Blue?
It's a grant that EMS guys do, the last one they got was Dragon Fund?
Yes.
It's the assist on the gurney to allow 600 pounds to be dealt with by one person, so they got that last year, and it got fully funded. I'm not sure, I don't.
I'm not sure what their plan is for 25, he did not.
Yeah, he did not go into what his plan was for, what they were applying for for 25, but it's all EMS, typically ambulance related.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess I just wanted to put that out there for you guys to see, I think it's important, grants are not free, and, and we know, we signed up for that. We're still getting, I mean, I know it's a lot of money, we're getting a $14 million improvement on Second Street, that is going to be amazing.
That's great.
So we need to, but we need to start planning for that 1.5, I think we can put the 225 into the budget, plus these smaller ones, and probably finagle that, but that 1.5 is a big dip, so, so I was glad that we would be able to do that.
And what did it change into? I forgot what you just said.
The 225,450? 225,450, not 1.5.
Okay.
Okay.
Nice change.
Yeah. Well, it's really just giving the chance.
Yeah.
Just keeping the chance, yeah.
Change.
Okay, so, so Tom and Wendy, did you get your spreadsheet?
Yeah, thanks.
Okay.
Yep.
So we have enough people here tonight to kind of talk about their, the other entities to talk about their requests, so since they've sat through that entire sales tax thing, hoping that maybe if you had any questions for the chamber, for family resources.
And Dr. Sanders.
And Dr. Sanders and Tommy's with.
Here, okay.
If you guys had any questions for them, or if you would like to hear what they would are using their funds for, this would be a great time to do that.
It's a pleasure to hear from individuals here. Fire away.
Cool, well, I just wanted to share some information first off, and I didn't get this to you guys ahead of time to get in the packet, but it's probably, this first one is something that Tom and Wendy have probably already seen, but, thanks. This is, just to share something we've been working on, we've been collaborating with CDFU and the Pop River Salmon Marketing Association to really try to help the businesses prep for board of fish. As you guys know, this is a really important meeting that is going to have a lot of impacts, probably on the, not only the fishery, but the poultry operations and the biggest industries in town, and the time of year it is, some, a lot of businesses, you know, needed, needed a lot of warning and reminding to stay open, to be available, and we've been getting creative with them to make sure that there's going to be services, lodging, everything available for these folks. So that's just one example of some of the work that we're doing that affects local businesses, affects the Cordoba center with the hooking of that conference and the maintaining a good relationship with them so that they continue to come back, advocating within the business community to. advocating within the business community to, and providing support to them to make the most of that opportunity. We've also recruited a conference coming in in December. It's about 40 people, it's a smaller conference, but it's a good one. It's the statewide tourism organization's annual retreat. And that's gonna also be in early December. We did put forth substantial effort to get proposal into the cultural tourism conference. And while that one was not selected this year, but I think we have a big chance of getting them in the future. And we're also trying to get the AmeriCultur Conference of Alaska here and a few other conferences and meetings, about five more that I'm working to recruit and I'm actively doing outreach to local businesses, organizations, and individuals that might have connections to other meetings that we can recruit to Cordova. And I'm gonna be trying to work a little more closely with Elena to make sure that when meetings are, conferences or events are booked here, that I can get in touch with them and be connected with them to make sure that they are taking full advantage of the amenities in town and catering and activities and retail and kind of building time in their schedule to make sure that the attendees have ample opportunity to spend money while they're here and support the local economy. The conferences that we have had recently, the Alaska Historical Society, the Pioneer Convention, had good experiences. The local businesses were reporting that they had extra traffic and that they had a good response from those, those meetings. And I did work with both those entities to help facilitate a good experience for those who have been to help with the planning of those as well. That's one part of the work that we do, we do a lot of other work too, that I'm sure you guys are aware of. I'm not gonna be here for the board, for the city council meeting next week, I'll be uptown for a conference. So I wanted to share with you guys, and I can email this, and I'll just, I'll email it to you, city, to put in the packet next week if you want. But I just wanted to hand it out today to, it's our annual impact report that we always share with you guys to show you some kind of numbers and some benchmarks on why we do the work we do and the successes that we've been having. And we are working with local businesses, provide business trainings and networking events, that's been pretty successful. We're also working, not only with local businesses, but statewide businesses and organizations to try to make those connections with local businesses in the community to increase investment in Cordova. Our events and festivals, obviously, the quality of life that they provide to the community is a big reason why we do them, but they also provide a lot of economic impact. The destination marketing and destination management work that we do, that also obviously has an economic impact for Cordova. And we're gonna continue to try to not only make Cordova known as a big destination and, but we're also doing a lot of work to try to make sure that the impacts are balanced for the community. We've been meeting, met with Sam and Tommy and some other city staff once, and we're planning to meet, hoping to meet with you guys again to follow up, along with meeting with, being, communicating with the harbor commission about how, what kind of fees and letters and rules we can put in place for, through the court, try to maximize the benefit there. We can be the destination leadership team in Cordova that is populated by stakeholders from the community, from all different sectors. That's a whole work in itself. And we're also, you know, one of the benefits of contributing, of the city contributing to the Chamber as a separate nonprofit membership organization, instead of just hiring a tourism director and doing this work in-house, is that we take every dollar that you give us and we turn it into $2 to get all this work done. Because we're able to get membership revenue, sponsorship revenue, advertising revenue, gaining revenue from other sources. And, and we're able to, you know, instead of just having one person working for you, you've got three doing this work. And the advocacy that we do for the Alaska Marine Highway and the Central Air is also important and ongoing. We are, I've been looking at our budget for 2024. We are seeing impacts to our membership revenue from businesses who are feeling the impacts of inflation and I expect that to continue. So we are exploring other revenue streams. The contribution that the city gives to the Chamber is a substantial part of our budget and we hope that we can continue to keep showing you guys that that is a good investment. The, the in-kind contribution that you currently give to the Chamber, the use of our office space is essential to the work that we do and we hope that we can continue to stay in that space. I appreciate the breakdown on this handout to show that that lease is worth 25,800, which is a different number than I thought was there, so that's good to know. And, you know, as we move forward with the city, I hope that we can go into direct negotiations with the city to renew that lease and discuss if the city can contribute, can continue to contribute at the same level with the contribution of that lease or if there needs to be a little split on that. And, you know, some of the revenue generation ideas that we have or things that we would need to get approval from the city, as it would be utilizing parts, space in that, in that building. I'll give you one example. We are looking at utilizing the storage room, the middle room, makes this to be a laboratory, clearing that out and we'd like to consider turning that into co-working space. Filling a community need aligned with our mission and support small businesses, entrepreneurs, and visitors. And would be an opportunity for us to generate a little bit more revenue that might help us contribute to costs a little more. That's all I had, so Tom, did you want to add anything? Tommy is a board member of the Chamber and also very connected to the Board of Fish issues as well.
Just getting into the details of the Board of Fish meeting, I think it's fish politics season and at the, at the Alaska Board of Fisheries, there's been quite a few new appointments and so there's a lot of real need and opportunity for them to understand how fisheries impact this community and how their decisions could impact the community's economy. There's one proposal that proposes to reduce hatch reproduction of pink and chum salmon and pricking sound by 25%. This is a proposal that we won't see many times, but there has been significant turnover at the board and there's some concern that this could be fast fish, if successfully implemented, would certainly impact the city's revenues. So that's, you know, that's part of why the Chamber, CDFU, the Marketing Association are really trying to encourage local businesses to, to be open so that, you know, stakeholders can have that, that space to have really important conversations with board members.
Can I ask you one question? Just one of the other things that members can get through you is that health insurance. Is that? Do a lot of people take advantage of that, or a few?
It varies. It, we have had, like, I think the most that we've had is four different entities that are enrolled in that. But it ebbs and, you know, it ebbs and flows, but I think it is a really good option. It's, you know, it's a healthcare alternative to insurance. And so if, for, for small businesses, I think it's a really good option. And for fishermen, I think it'd be a really good option too. I think with any, with any, it takes time for people to hear about it and then it takes time for them to trust it. So, yeah, it's, there's slow adoption of that.
Good, thank you. Next up. Nicole?
Sure. Thank you, and I too just printed out a few papers and I didn't get it, but I can email it to those. I just wanted to give you a couple years of data. Yeah, I'll put this on the site. And the top one is the most recent, knowing that FY '25 is just data for the first July and August and up until the 10th of September. We do have some changes in there and there's on the newer document, one of, that you don't have, is a new grant that we just received through the, it's called WEHAP, it's an Department of Housing. So we received, this is our, we just now are getting ready to sign, we're coming to our next year. We're coming on the end of this first year of the HEY Housing Grant, which helps with shelter and homelessness. So I know that in the past, we have talked about homelessness and housing and we did have a partnership with Sound Alternatives, who was doing wonderful work in that, but it was a pilot program. And so we, we were able to go out and receive some funds through the state for HEY. And actually, the city wrote a letter of support for that, which really pushed it and we were able to get that money. So there are some new numbers of what we've been doing in this last year with housing. And just some of those numbers we had, and it's not on your paper, so I apologize, that's what I'm telling you. We, for, under homeless, we sheltered 27 nights. We had 31 text liner helplines that were just pertaining to homeless and housing. And again, and we had 513 services that we provided to individuals around that area. And it's still very quiet in our community, not a lot of people know that we are now helping with that kind of service. So I think though, that's important to know and that grant ends in December and then we'll start another fiscal year. So we're all a little bit different. The money that the city provides to us, I think it's important to know, you know, you guys were talking about matches and other grants, that's definitely something that when we're applying through Rasmussen Foundation or Alaska Mental Health Trust, or we're applying through the state, through the Department of Public Safety is where most of our funding comes from. And when we're applying for those grants, they like to see matches and they like to see that the community is, that they see we're doing good work and that they're invested in our program. Because if the community's not invested, then why should other entities invest in us as well? A couple of things that, you're welcome to ask questions about, there's, there are some numbers that are very different and I can explain for some of those, like some of our CAC, we're not, we don't have that contract with NDE right now because they didn't receive additional funding, so they cut our contract in here, so that part, that got cut. So we're just waiting for different things, but there's explanations to many of the numbers. The money that we use, a lot of it's for match. A lot of it has been in the past when we had to pay leasing for facilities, for rental. We now, we're paying, currently, we're paying rent on our new building while we're working on our capital campaign. We have a Merkowski appropriation in for $1.6 million to have four new units built for rental facility. We have prevention rooms, we have a lot of things in mind for plans in the future. And so with not having money and supporting from the city, it makes it really challenging to go out and get additional funds to continue to do the work that we're doing. So I appreciate that and I appreciate that you, you are invested in us and the work that we do. I'm open for questions if you have any questions.
Questions for Nicole?
Nicole, I just wanted to say congratulations on that new building.
Oh, thank you, it's still a work in progress and anybody is welcome, but right now it's a complete destruction. The upstairs bathroom is destroyed, the downstairs apartment is destroyed because we're fixing it up so that we can house people in there. For example, during the summer, we had to turn people away to put people in housing or shelter, homeless specifically, because there was no housing in town. All the apartments, all the hotels, which is how we house people, were full. So we didn't have a place to put them. The best we could do is I can give you a tent and I can give you a sleeping bag and I'm sorry. And that in this federal status is still considered homeless. Couch surfing is homeless. So just because we don't see people sitting outside our businesses, there are still many homeless people in our community. So thanks Wendy and you're welcome, all welcome to come look, we're gonna have a big grand opening when we get there, but it'll be a little while, so.
Okay, thank you. Was Dr. Sanders on the?
She is.
Dr. Sanders?
Okay, thanks. I just wanted, I'm not sure that the hospital quite qualified as outside entity, but I just wanted to communicate our needs. Over the last two and a half years, the hospital have been working to build up our own expenses into our cost report cycle. So previously, we were doing an in-kind contribution with the utilities and we've been paying those for the last two and a half years. Just to kind of give you a sense of, we're trying to become self-funded, we're trying to get on our own feet. So over the last two years, we've also had, over three years, we've had a $300,000 fee appropriation. As we work to get the financial independence, our self-sustained, we need to build that appropriation into our cost report cycle. So we would like to, it looks like in 2025, we can decrease our ask. And, but in order to build that into our cost report cycle, we would be asking for $200,000 rather than $300,000. And it would let us, over the next three years, our intention is to continue to drop that ask so that we can build it into our Medicaid and Medicare reimbursements. Glad to answer any questions.
So that number just went down $1,000? From three to two. Okay, I just want.
Not gonna say no to that.
How often does that happen?
Yes.
Way to go, Dr. That's impressive. That's terrific. I mean, I know that's a result of a lot of work and a lot of sweat and number crunching, so thank you.
And our goal is to continue to do that with the recognition that we also are going to have to put together at some point in the future, a very large capital stack because we have an aging plant. But right now for our operations, we're continuing, we want to be able to self-fund and decrease our ask and no longer be reliant on this fee appropriation, hopefully in the next three or four years.
Thank you. Anybody, do you have anything else?
Dr. Sanders, this is Councilman Sherman. I was just wondering how use of the CT scan is and I know we spoke earlier about possibility of bone scans and I have learned the difficulty of getting the radioactive material into communities. But is that becoming a profitable use for the community?
We just went from a 16 slice to a 64 slice CT scanner. That's a magnificent CT scanner for a community our size. We've never really looked into being able to do PET scans and get the nucleotide into Cordova for a number of reasons and the reality is probably you want to hire a machine that does, now with current technology, the machines can get such a, you know, we can do double the slices at a minimum. So I think we'd still encourage our patients to go uptown for the nuclear scan.
And are you, is there more increased use or are people aware of the fact that the CT scan is up and operating in Cordova?
Maybe a tiny increased use, it seems to be a pretty steady use, but what we are seeing is beautiful images and really definitely better diagnostics than what we had before.
Thank you.
Anything else for Dr. Sanders? Okay, thank you, Doctor. That was it for your survey.
Can we just talk about the schedule that's on page one, the memo?
Sam, I was just gonna answer real quick. And will Ski Hill be present at another time or place or not? We don't know.
I don't know. So I guess if you want, let's, let's talk about the Ski Hill for just real quick in the school.
Sure. I just don't want to forget that.
Yeah. So the Ski Hill. So the Ski Hill, I have so many papers now that I'm not really familiar with.
Look at the black and white.
Right, and I was looking for my contract. I, I looked through the, the contract and I, I just, I just want to be upfront here, like, I'm not advocating for or against anything. I just want you guys to understand what's going on, right? I want it to be out there and you to know. So I hope nobody feels picked on because I'm really not trying to do that. I just, it's always been something for me that I've always wanted to understand and I wanted to make sure you guys understand because I can remember sitting on my hands a few times when I felt like things weren't, I mean, they're there, but they're not very well explained. So for the Ski Hill contract, within the contract, there are things we have to do. We, it is specifically mandated. Heating oil, electric, water supply remedies, although I will talk about water a little bit. You know, we have to push that revenue pass-through because that's the way we keep that contract there. Is it supporting recreational use and that's what our lease is, the city leases that property. There are a few things that are requested, specifically stated in the contract can be requested. That includes insurance, annual inspections, and there's a statement within the contract that talks about repair and maintenance. It's not mandated. It's not required that we give a specific amount for, for the repair maintenance. It also talks about how the Ski Hill should be charging enough to, to do some of that to keep up maintenance as well. So these are just things that I feel like we could talk about. I'm not asking you to do that tonight. I just want you to think about that. I think it's important. And then I might have to defer for Cheryl on this because I still, the school thing makes my mind kind of crazy. It's hard for me to, but I think in general, we passed the resolution in June where we said we would come back and talk about that and I think we need to do that. And so Cheryl, if I say this wrong, you jump out there and tell me.
Okay.
Okay. So we have committed to the 1.4, so it's in transfers to others, the top two on the bottom thing. Okay. The 1.4 and the 8.64.
Note the 8.66.
8.66.
2024 is budgeted.
Yes. What we haven't discussed, nor has the school budgeted, is the 8.66. That is the fiscal year. 26 for the school.
25 for us.
25 for us. So, and I'm, and that resolution clearly states that we can talk about any or all of that. So we need to have a discussion about these other expenses that we have that are not related to a specific department or those kinds of things. I know it's, I love kids. I think school is great. I appreciate the schooling I got. I am not anti-school. I'm just saying that we need to think about the city as a whole. It's not the school against the city. It's not this city against the school. We work together and we need to be able to all, be able to survive. So we can have a discussion about that now. You guys come all around. We will have another work session. We can put a number in there to start the conversation if that's what having one to do for, especially with the school. Susan, anybody have any thoughts on these particular?
I mean, you're focused on the school, but I mean, you mean even Ski Hill and all the outside entities. We wanted, we wanted to have everyone here tonight to, you know, give, give their, give their talk to explain the benefit that they're providing the community and, you know. But like Sam says, I guess staff wants the council really think, can we continue to fund all of these entities at the same level or the higher level that they're asking? And that's the conversation that we have.
Well, we don't know what the revenue picture looks like. I mean, we know it's that, but we don't, but we don't have any numbers to say, you know, we should cut this much here or we should. So I have a hard time. I mean, I'm not saying that we won't get there, but I just don't know how much. So it's hard to say. That's me. I don't know.
I hear you. I'm the same way. Until we see the whole, all the expenses and can know that our gap is this much and we need to fill it somehow.
Right. And we're not asking, I mean, if you want to come to us with a budget that's not balanced and say, okay, here's, you know, here are all the expenses that I think we're gonna incur and here's what we think the revenue picture is, now tell us where you want us to cut. I'm not saying that to come with a balanced budget first time around.
No, by all means.
No, I didn't want to.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I just wanted to say that extra, make sure that that was clear. So we're not asking you to do that, but I can't, I don't know how to.
I don't either. I think I look careful at schools too, but it just seems like we're looking at one slice out of many things to consider.
I just want to make sure that it is a slice that is understood and on the table. That's, that's the point of the conversation.
We made the resolution for the school saying that we're gonna look at it, but it's, so the 1.4 is flexible or is not, did you say?
The resolution was for the 1.4 in that first half of 26.
Subject to?
Subject to the city's budget. So there is a line at the end that says, you know, there, there is.
So that's flexible too?
Yeah, I guess I was just trying to differentiate that eight.
Between what's already been discussed and what hasn't been discussed.
Yeah, that's, yeah, so we're, it should be.
I hear you. I, I think everything's on the table, in my opinion.
I just.
Council gets to make the decision, but I think it's, it's all gotta be on the table.
Yeah, and I'm just, I'm just.
I have the explanation on the scale and then I would look, maybe we move forward and they put that in a memo so I know what we are required and what is requested. Where you explained it, that would be helpful for me. Okay, get back down, numbers.
And that lease expires soon, right? 2027.
That was what I was gonna ask too. You don't need to see the whole contract, but just a memo with.
Okay.
Cause I think you and I negotiated that.
It's a fairly short contract. I think it's only like, yeah, six, five or so. So we could include the whole contract or just itemize it in a memo or a folder, but yeah, we'll give you that info.
We got enough memo of work.
About the Ski Hill to understand, so what you're showing here are the lease revenue pass-through. So the money from CTC and Copper Valley Wireless comes to the city, the city passes it through. And then their other revenues come from cabin rentals and lift tickets?
And then membership.
And membership.
Right, okay. Did they provide us with an end of the season report?
No.
By any angels?
So we don't really know, I mean, there's these two line items plus whatever else.
Would you like me to ask them for that?
I believe they're required to do that in our contract, really not, to provide us with a spring end of the season and a budget time.
The contract specifies that they need to provide a, they need to give a report to the city, but it doesn't give times of the year or what needs to be included in those reports.
Okay.
Well, we can just say we can observe until we get a report.
It used to because we built that into that.
Well, the MOU, that, I think that's in the MOU which was never signed.
Yeah.
Nobody has a signed MOU. Yeah, it's not in the contract. I mean, there is a part in the contract that talks about giving reports and they are required to share their books. But I know the language that you're speaking to, it was in the MOU which was never.
Did the manager never sign up back then in 2000?
Neither, neither our files nor Sheridan's files could either of us produce a, we both have a copy of the MOU, but neither of us have a copy of a signed MOU with all that clarifying language.
Would you have some nice suggestion?
No, that's me.
Anybody else have any thoughts?
So the last thing is? Yeah, because I just lost a week and a half of work, literally. I didn't work for a week and a half, which is like.
Unheard of.
Yes, I can't even believe it.
And now I feel like I'm like, ah. So, October 23rd meeting, we are not gonna have a work session. I'm just, I can't, I'm just not ready for it. I didn't have time to work with staff on our own budgets and things like that. So we will have the audit on that meeting. We're just gonna do it as a.
Guest speaker.
Guest speaker. And I have some, I'm gonna do a manager's report to talk a lot of things in the audit that I feel are very important to, for us to know. On November.
The 30th that we're gonna do or no?
A work session on the 30th would be general expenses.
I'm sorry, city unit?
Both? You said maybe just fee scheduled that day. What did you decide?
I thought maybe just be scheduled next week, didn't it?
No, we're, we're not doing the 23rd. So on the 30th, we'll have a budget work session. There isn't a regular meeting. And Sam will decide which is easier to have ready. Either.
Getting expenses and stuff on into one place.
Some department heads have not given them the budget, their budget, so that's on us too.
Yeah, I was not hearing him.
Mine's tighty, but whatever. Okay.
So that's a big update for the schedule at least.
Well, the only other thing about the schedule.
No work session.
Correct. Seven o'clock meeting next week downstairs. Everything a little back to normal. Casey had mentioned at the last meeting about changing a couple of dates. I've heard some of you say, and I think staff feels the same way, that you're gonna commit to a Wednesday, commit to four hours on a Wednesday instead of two hours on a Tuesday and two hours on a Wednesday. That's how I feel. So does any, so we're not gonna change off the Wednesdays? Is that that's okay with everyone?
Wasn't he asking about the 20th? Is that the one?
There were two dates that he asked for, the sixth and the 20th.
What will be third time for that Wednesday four hour meeting? Tom wants it relatively early.
So on days of regular meetings, we'll do the work sessions at five so that we can have two hours. Because on, there may be work, public hearings on those days, so, yeah, it'll be an hour and 45. So on days of regular meetings, it'll be at five. On days when we're just having a work session like tonight, it'll be at six. And then we can go all night long.
So you, you sent me an email with the, with the schedule. That schedule still holds true. Nothing's been changed from what you sent?
Except for that next week, we're not having a work session on the 23rd. We're just having a regular meeting that night.
Okay.
So far, all these other ones are holding for now.
All right. So seven o'clock on the 23rd?
Correct.
There won't be any?
Public hearings.
Public hearings.
Oh, there is. There's a 6:45 public hearing for the second ordinance that we did, the Title VII part. Can we do them separately? But then they're gonna be approved off kilter. It'll be fine.
You'll figure it out. We just put a date on.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, they all start on the first. They all start on effective January 1st anyway.
Okay. We good?
I'm good.
Session over?
We're so good.
End of our session. Thank you. Thanks for sticking in there, Tom.
Yeah, thanks guys.